Good afternoon, everyone. We're ready to go here. It is moved by Counselor Cairns, second by Counselor Hunter. Be it resolved that the council agenda as presented on November 19, 2024 be approved as circulated. And please vote on that. Carrie, thank you. It's moved by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Jorgensen. Be it resolved that the next portion of the meeting be closed to the public in order to consider a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Please vote on that. Carrie, thank you. And we'll be back here at 3 o'clock for the public session.
Okay, we're just about ready to get started here? Okay, are we just about ready to get started here? Madam Clerk? Okay. All right, welcome back. We did have a closed session earlier. There will be something coming out later on today's agenda. I will ask, are there any... Oh, no, I'm gonna... Sorry. Because we went in under counsel. So, thank you, Madam Clerk. It is moved by Counselor Cairn, second by Counselor Hunter. Be resolved that the Committee of Whole Agenda of November 19th, 2024, be approved as circulated. All in favor? Vote, please. That carries, thank you. Counselor, is there any disclosures of cunary interest today? Counselor Hunter? No, this isn't on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would like to declare on number six, report number DEV 2024-96.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to declare on report number DEV 2024-96.
Okay. Did I see your hand, Counselor Morphy?
Hi, it's through you. I'd like to report on F, on number seven. Follow-up REIC report number 10724.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So, we will now go over to Counselor Strength for the land acknowledgement statement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We would like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the First Peoples, who, for thousands of years before us, were and are still the keepers and caretakers of this land, where we now live and work, and in particular, the Chipewas of Rama, Wata Mohawk First Nations, and the Moon River Métis. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture, and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nation, Métis, and Inuit people. We recognize all the generations of Indigenous people and their historic connection to this place, and we are grateful for the opportunity to gather here at this time. Migwich.
Okay, thank you for that. So, today, we're going to start off with a deputation. Robert Gleikoff, come on up to the podium from Home Building Centre. And I'll just remind you, you do have 10 minutes for your present tape. Got cut off by the clerk. And so, we'll let you just go right, jump right in.
Did I hit the button? No, what are you talking? Okay, I'm live. There is a handout, I don't know. Honorable Mayor Lorenz, Deputy Mayor Jorgensen, and Counselors Gravenhurst. My name is Robert Gleikoff. And for those that you don't know me, I'm one of the owners at the Home Building Centre in Gravenhurst. I'm accompanied by, from Home Hardware Stores Limited, Ann Parker, who is the Assistant Manager of Modifications and Custom Plans for Beaver Homes Cottage's, and Chris Hamilton, who's their Beaver Home and Cottage Consultant. Today, we are here to request to be an approved provider partner of accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, with the Town of Gravenhurst's accessory dwelling units plan and ADU brochure. The federal government introduced a plan through their Housing Accelerator Fund as initiative to get ADUs in every municipality. As we have seen, homelessness emergencies in Muskoka, as shelter nights have increased by 607% since 2019. And in May of last year, the Province of Ontario announced a funding boost of $761,600 to support Muskoka's homelessness prevention program. I'm aware that usually, housing is a District of Muskoka responsibility, but we also recognize that the Town of Gravenhurst is progressing on a plan for ADUs with a brochure in the works. With the district initiative to aid in the building of ADUs, as well as an affordable rent schedule to follow in order to qualify for the funding, among other items, we think that the possibility of helping people find affordable and attainable housing is a large responsibility that requires solid partnership in the community to support the program. Sorry. There we go. All right, yay. Sorry, it wasn't changing at first, my apologies. Just get up here, there's the plan. So, there's the funding. And the rent schedule. So, why would the Town allow Home Building Centre Gravenhurst to provide approved models for ADU brochure and approved partner for the program? Well, we've been a mainstay community partner of Canadians since 1906, starting with Beaver Lumber. We live, shop, and work in the community, and truly care about our community. We have a solid reputation in the community, and the Town can trust that we will be here and can be counted on to provide a service. Does it play, or do I need to just... There we go. There's no sound. Beaver Homes and Cottage's ADU plans are prepared with the following. They come with a frost-protected engineered slab, electric air-sourced heat pump, and backup electric baseboard heaters, so it eliminates the need for natural gas or propane furnace. Insulation values that comply with package C4 of the OBC SP-12, Table 3.1.1.2.C. There's 36 inches wide doors for accessibility. And they can be easily modified to an ICF build for further environmental and cost-effective savings for years to come. They come with engineered drawings. If you turn to page 15 in each of your catalogues there is an example of what engineered they come with. And the catalogues you have before you already have 34 units in there to choose from. They come with a Beaver Home consultant. Ours is Chris, who's to help with the process from finish to end and can even provide help with financing and obtaining financing as well. ADUs also increase property value. In closing, we'd be very proud to be an approved partner with the Town of Gravenhurst in their ADU program, and hope we can.
Okay, well, thank you. Pretty fascinating. I think when we think of small houses, we don't see this kind of detail and beauty, right? Though we think of a trailer. So, I think this is a really great way to visualize it. Counselor, are there any questions? From Mr. Gleikoff? Counselor Morphy?
Thank you, through you. Hi, Rob. What is involved, like, what's the ask of us to become an authorized partner? What's our role in partnering with you?
So, the role, the sheet that came with your handout is an example of other municipalities that have similar programs. And what they have on their site is a list of pre-approved plans that the Town has already pre-approved. So, part of Bill 23 is to have an accelerated ARU program, which means pre-approved plans. On the Gravenhurst website, it does mention that there is a brochure coming, which I presumed was related to such a program. So, we're just happy to help wherever we can in securing that for the Town, because we know that the time's coming. I believe it's March of this 2025. A plan has to be in place. So, there's really not much to it. We're just wondering, we just want to help the Town have the models available for people that... Because they're going to be coming to you, not to me. So, if you don't have models or a plan in place, it's going to be very unfun.
I like that "unfun." Okay, I'm going to try not to use that later today. Okay, so, I'm going to go to Director Halford, just to give us the Town's point of view from Development Services.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. So, I'm not sure about the date that Mr. Gleikoff mentioned, but I do think this is, the products that are outlined here definitely offer a really exciting opportunity for, like, turnkey additional residential units for within the community. So, just to provide some context, the, as you know, Gravenhurst was the first municipality in Muskoka to complete a housing needs assessment. So, we now know that ADUs, like, we know qualitatively and quantitatively that that's something that we need for, that will help with addressing the housing need in the community. So, staff are going to be undertaking the development of a housing action plan. We're going to be talking about this a little bit further in the next couple of weeks, but we're going to be setting up a working group of staff to come up with that action plan. And one component of it is addressing the additional residential units. So, we don't have a full plan in place yet, but we know that ADUs have a major part in that. And the District also has a very robust affordable, additional residential unit granting program to provide, as long as the units are available to those that meet income requirements, and the rents are kept at affordability rate for an extended period of time, then you are eligible for a significant amount of money to contribute towards the purchasing or installation of an additional residential unit. So, we will be working in collaboration with that program. And there are also opportunities, through the building code, to pre-approve, for any individual to submit plans, and then have them pre-approved, so that it takes a little bit of the time away. And you know that when you purchase this package of drawings, they've, you know, they've been reviewed once by the chief building official or their staff, and you're one step closer to getting that, those shovels in the ground. So, there's lots of opportunity. We're still at the, we just approved the housing needs assessment, so we've got some work ahead of us. But definitely looking forward to working together with community partners. And we have the Housing Task Force Service Swap happening this Friday, where we're also going to get to see lots of other initiatives across the community. So, more to come on that. But definitely, this does offer a really interesting and tangible approach to helping with the housing crisis here in Gravenhurst.
Counselor Barney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess my question is to Director Halford. So, if somebody's, I mean, I think these are amazing designs, especially for one person or a couple. So, is the idea that if somebody, say, found some property in Killworthy that they wanted to buy, do they then come to the Town and ask for a package? Is that how it works? Or do we, they have to be on town property? Or I'm just confused about that idea. Thank you.
Director Halford?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to the Counselor. So, I think there's lots of different options, but what I believe Mr. Gleikoff is mentioning right now is that you own a house in Gravenhurst. And the changes that happen to the Planning Act are, for within our serviced urban settlement areas, you're allowed up to three additional residential units on your property. One within your house, and up to two in your backyard. So, in the urban centre of Gravenhurst, let's say you own a lot, and you've got a big backyard. This would, these types of opportunities, you know, pre-designed, self-contained units, you would purchase the designs and have it built on your property. That's what Mr. Gleikoff has mentioned. These are additional residential units. So, these would be in addition to your home. So, these, I, these could also, people could purchase them and build them on an individual lot. They're, they're, they're houses. But the program that has been mentioned is additional residential units, ARUs. And that, you'll recall, we just did an amendment to our zoning bylaw to allow them in, to coordinate with the Planning Act changes, which in our urban service settlement areas, you're allowed up to three, as long as you can fit them on the property and all of that good stuff. But before, there was limitations on the number of them, and now it's up to three units. So, that's the intent of the additional residential unit programs.
Not sure, oh, there we go. You have a subsequent?
Thank you. So, I'm still trying to figure out, because these look like such amazing designs for a single person, not on, like, not on another property, but maybe they want to live in the country, and they just want a small house. And these are such great plans, then they can find a piece of property that they can use. And, okay, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
Yeah, through you, Your Worship. The idea here is that these are small, self-contained. And other municipalities, for example, Callingwood, actually hired, they put out a call, an RFP for proposals, and had an architect, an engineer, pre-draw some, you know, Callingwood-looking type of additional residential units. And now, those are pre-approved, that Callingwood has them at the municipality. And if you'd like to do it, that's an easy way to have that opportunity to put some, an additional residential unit on your property. There's nothing stopping a property owner from going to Beaver Homes, getting one of these plans, and putting them, in fact, lots of people do that. But the, kind of, the angle on this discussion that we're having today is an additional residential unit, yeah.
Okay, Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I've often felt that ARUs are a great way to, you know, probably the fastest way of getting rental accommodation that we can come up with. You had mentioned... You had mentioned that in the urban area, they're permitted, but aren't they permitted in the rural area as well? In, but, yeah, and they always have been, according to the zoning, in different zones, right?
Director?
Yes, so the way our zoning bylaw is written, they've, in the rural area, you are allowed up to two individual residential units. So yes, essentially, that is like the additional residential unit proposal. But in, when the, the specific changes to the Planning Act that were made were for on full services, to allow up to four, like, so the primary house plus three additional residential units. That, that, that permission is only in the serviced urban settlement areas. But yes, in the rural area, you are allowed an additional residential unit as well. That is correct.
You have a subsequent?
Yes. Parking is always the question that comes up. Could you, I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot if you don't have.
No, it's fine.
But in terms of the parking, because the province was talking about not allowing parking to limit these types of things, I think, if I recall.
Yeah, through, Your Worship, to the counselor. So the Planning Act requires, states that we can't, we can't require more than one parking space per unit. So you still have to have one per space, but you can't require more than that. Some municipalities were requiring two. So that's not allowed. So they've been specific that there has to be the same number, as many units as you have on your property, you have to have that number of parking spaces to be eligible for the ARU exceptions. Yeah.
Okay, so we got a little off track there, but good questions. Thank you for coming. I think, you know, there's a lot of discussion going on with housing these days. We've got Counselor Hunter sits on the task force at the district. We've got Counselor Strength is on Community Planning Services, as well as Gateway Homes, which I think would be a good connection to make. And then we are in the midst, as the director said. So I think more to come. We thank you for your presentation and stay tuned. Okay, great. Thanks for coming. Okay, so, good conversation. Counsel, it's moved by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Jorgensen. Be resolved that the following consent agenda items be approved. One, minutes of Public Art Advisory Committee, April 23, 2024. Two, the Minutes of the Gravenhurst Public Library Board, September 12, 2024. Minutes of the Accessibility Advisory Committee, September 26, 2024. Minutes of the Gravenhurst Emergency Management Program Committee, October 2, 2024. Minutes, the Municipal Heritage Committee, October 8, 2024. Report, 2024 Third Quarter Financial Update. Report, follow-up, REIC Report Number 10724. Report, Single Source Cemetery Tractor. And Report, Dock Control Bylaw, Gull and Silver Lake Association. Okay, Counsel? Does anybody have anything they would like to speak about later? Okay, so I'll just, okay, so we're going to vote on number seven first. So please vote.
Let me say the, sorry, I pressed that button too early. We're going to do that vote again.
That carries, thank you. And then on the other eight, call the question. Please vote. And that carries, thank you. Sorry, I'm just trying to figure out who's here for this, so I just, I'll, perfect. Okay, so I'm going to read the resolution. And keep in mind, this can be amended. This is to get the conversation started. Moved by Counselor Morphy, second by Counselor Robinson. Be resolved that Report Number LEG 202418. RE, Council Composition and Ward Boundary Review Project Conclusion be received for information. That committee select Options Three as its preferred alternative for the new ward boundaries, and that administration can be directed to draft and submit the new ward boundary bylaw at the December council meeting to approve and enact for the 2026 municipal election. So we do have a brief introduction from our clerk, Ms. Tebow. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Legislative Service is very proud to get to this phase of the project. As Counsel is aware, direction was received last term to do a ward boundary review. Our friends at Watsons have been in front of Counsel a handful of times, as well as in the public and in the virtual public atmosphere. So we are very happy to come to you with the final report and recommendation. But I'm even more happier to throw the mic over to our deputy clerk, Jonathan Gilston, who has been the lead of this project, who provides some introductory comments. And then we do have our consultants virtually to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Or sorry, Madam Clerk. And good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Counsel. So as the clerk mentioned, before you, today is a final report from our friends at Watson and Associates, who provides their summary of the last eight months that they dedicated to the town to find the best alternative to our current ward boundary system. They're here today to provide a brief presentation to prelude their discussions and Counsel's deliberations today, as well as providing their highlighted preference amongst all the five options. I could go on, but I'm really excited about the discussions. So I'm going to pass things along to our friends at Watsons, Jack and Bob.
Okay, so just need the microphones turned on from the virtual participants. Okay. It's Dr. Williams and Jack. So I'm going to turn mine off. Welcome, and the floor is yours.
Can everybody hear me? Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you. I'm just bringing up your presentation now.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm trying to share my screen, but it's not coming up for some reason. Okay, perfect. Everyone can see that?
Great, yes. Go ahead. Thank you.
Perfect. So, okay, so like the clerk and deputy clerk mentioned, we're here today to do a brief presentation, want to provide Counsel with a little bit of context, a little bit of a refresh on the process to date, walk Counsel through our thinking on the final options, and quickly go through, as a reminder, what the preliminary options were before we talk about the final options. So if we go to the first slide, really quickly, a little bit of context to how we got here. A reminder that ward boundaries were created way back in the 70s. Four wards established, five local counselors, mayor elected at large. The municipality did a ward boundary back in 2009. At that time, because of changes in population, a fifth ward was created, largely around Gravenhurst. And that reflected some of that population growth that had occurred since the original system. Fast forward to 2021, at that time, the District of Muskoka did a council composition review, but made no changes. So with Gravenhurst retained three district counselors. And now in 2024, we've had some pretty significant population change since 2009. And we're here to review whether or not the system that existed in 2009, five local counselors and five wards, three district counselors elected at large, and a mayor, for a total council of nine, whether that still meets the needs of the residents of Gravenhurst. So if we move to the next slide, just a reminder on the guiding principles. And this is largely, you know, as the consultant team and why the municipality look to, you know, an objective arms-length consultant is that there are guiding principles for us that help us guide us through this review and about to evaluate both the current system, as well as any options that we may provide. So as a reminder, we have gone through these in the past. They have been relayed to the public, a lot of information about them and feedback we received about them. But as a reminder, representation by population, definitely one of the most important ones, and really what most democratic systems are based on, ensuring that each counselor is representing a roughly equal number of constituents within their wards. Not only are we concerned about existing population, but the other guiding principle is we have to be concerned with municipal growth trends and projections of that population. So trying to design a system that reflects both the changes that have occurred in population up to today, but also acknowledging that there is going to be growth, and some of those changes or some of those wards may continue to change. We want a system that acknowledges geographic and topographic boundaries so that we can identify, clearly identify, where a ward and where begins and where a ward ends, and acknowledge that if there are major geographic or topographic boundaries, that we learn about them and learn how to use them within the ward boundary design. And the last one, communities of interest, almost as important as representation by population, I think, especially in some communities. And what we, what we mean about communities of interest is that wards, as much as they can, recognize traditional neighborhoods, recognize settlement patterns, and where possible, not fragment some of these historical communities and village, but as much as possible, try to keep them together and contained within wards. All of these guiding principles together are what form what we, what we call effective representation. And that's really what we're trying to achieve through a ward system or any design, redesign of that ward system, is to ensure that those wards throughout the entire municipality are providing effective representation. So what did we discover? If we go to the next slide, obviously, we're not only evaluating the options, but to get to the options, we want to evaluate the existing system. So this is really a very, you know, a method that we use in all our ward boundaries to provide a consistent methodology in terms of evaluating the system. And we use the guiding principles that we just spoke about. We use some of the population data that we talked about to determine whether the system, we think, is meeting the guiding principles, applying that effective representation that we discussed, or whether that we think that it needs a change. When we evaluated your system, and again, we've talked about this at length in the reports and in presentations, but in general, the system, we thought, worked in a pretty decent way when, with respect to communities of interest, with respect to ensuring that the boundaries are using geographic and topographic features. But there were a couple of distinct issues that we found with the system, and it really has to do with what I mentioned. The population growth that has occurred since 2009 has been strong, and it's been very concentrated in particular parts of the municipality. As a result, when we look at the wards, we have a couple of wards that hover around 7,000 in population, and we have three wards that are closer to about 4,000 in population. So there's quite a disparity in population in the ward system. As you can see, four wards really lie outside of that acceptable range. And that acceptable range is we really want wards to be, you know, within about 25% of the average ward population, recognizing that it can't be perfect because we want to meet some of the other guiding principles. But these, these three or four wards are fairly extreme in terms of where they lie in that variance. And when we look at where the growth is expected in Gravenhurst, it doesn't get better, but it's likely to get worse. So those are two glaring no's when we look at, do, does this system meet the guiding principles in terms of representation by population and municipal growth trends and projections? And for that reason, we felt that looking at alternatives and options was warranted. So if we move to the next slide, a little bit about some of the public engagement we did. So there were two rounds of public engagement. The first round was a little more free-form. The public didn't have options to consider yet. It was more revolving around the guiding principles and us as consultants trying to find out what, what things we should look at, what issues or considerations people had with their existing wards. And there was various ways we did that. But what we're going to present tonight is just a summary of the survey that we used. Again, a very quantifiable way for us to measure some of the public feedback. In the first round, not a lot of engagement through the survey. Again, as I mentioned, not uncommon for us because there's not options or things to, for people to get really interested or excited about. But in Phase Two, that number jumped up significantly to almost 150 respondents. In terms of some of the things we heard, as we just saw from that chart, I'm not surprised that municipal growth trends and projections was 35% as the preferred guiding principle from the respondents. Representation by population right behind it at 30% because it fits with, with the data that we just talked about, and people are aware that, again, some wards have significantly higher populations than others. But communities of interest and topographic boundaries each received almost 20%, so not in consideration. In terms of when we got to the second round and we asked about the actual options that we presented, that I'll review in a second. As you can see on the chart on the bottom left, overwhelming support for preliminary option two. I should note that you can see, if you add up the numbers, 144 respondents. I believe only 87 of the respondents actually answered in terms of a preferred option, so we should note that. And then we also asked in the survey, because this came up as, as we started to listen to residents, some counselors, some question about district counselors elected at large, as they are now, so status quo, or elected by a boundary or some sort of geographic representation. And again, you can see quite large support, almost 75 of the 93, I think, respondents in that question, supporting the status quo, continuing to elect district counselors at large. So we take a couple of minutes, go to the next slides. We're going to go through the preliminary options, just as a reminder for Counsel. And just before we do that, we'll just remind everyone that there were five preliminary options that we put out. As I mentioned, a lot of the consideration from the consultant perspective has to be the guiding principles, best practices, our experiences, case law, obviously, what we just talked about, community feedback, engagement, what we heard. I mentioned what the, what the support was for option two there. So if we go through on the next slide, we think about option one. And again, I'll be brief, and we can spend a little bit more time, obviously, talking about these as Counsel sees fit, and I'll provide a little bit of summary at the end of my presentation. But a couple of points about option one. It was really similar to the existing system. We mentioned at the beginning that there are a lot of good things with the system that we found. There were a couple of issues primarily with, with population, excuse me, parity, that we wanted to try and fix. So that's really what option one does. It's really familiar with the existing system, tweaks a few things to really address the main issues of population parity. However, as you can see on the right-hand side of the table, when we incorporate projections into this option, we start to have very similar issues that we have today with one ward being quite high and a couple of other wards being quite low. But in terms of existing populations, so if we focus on sort of this election, midterm election, it fixes the most glaring issues that we found with the existing system while still maintaining certain things that we thought were good with the system. Not a lot of change, but fixes, like I said, the major things. If we look at the next slide, option two. Option two is exactly the same as option one. However, it addresses in the south end of the municipality change between wards four and five, and try, or sorry, three and four, and tries to fix some of that population parity and gets it a little bit closer to parity. So an option one, it's decent, and option two, it starts to get really, really good in terms of parity between three, four. Again, when we look at the bottom half, it also is more familiar to the existing system, where we have Ward Three crossing over Highway 11, and option one, it stays contained to one side. So those were options one and two. And as we said a couple of minutes ago, reminder to Counsel, option two was the most preferred through the survey. We move to the next slide, we're going to go to option three. Option three, and we'll talk about this again in more detail in a second, but this is the final recommended option from the consultant team. The reason that we are recommending this as the final option is that while we find that option one and option two are both very viable options and address the most immediate concerns, we're providing Counsel with an option that addresses all of the guiding principles in a really, in a really decent way. It incorporates future growth that's expected to occur, especially in some concentrated. It incorporates future growth that's expected to occur, especially in some concentrated areas. It still has familiarity with the existing system, not completely blowing words up and and creating a system that. Is completely new to council and residents. But definitely when we look at the Ravenhurst area, especially around the area around Lake Muskoka. It looks different than it does today. But again, it addresses, you know, in in a way we can say that this is starting to look. What the population is starting to look like around there as well, what we expect the population. To look like in the future as well, so we thought that this presented the most balanced option. Balancing the guiding principles as best as they could for the entirety of the municipality. Go to the next slide and look at option four. Option four, when we look at the population tables, I like to say sometimes that some of these. Excuse me, options that we create are in a sense almost computer generated options. You know, we're still trying to take heed of the guiding principles. So geographic boundaries and communities of interest. But this one definitely moves a lot more towards the representation by population principles. And really moves a little bit away from some of the geographic communities of interest principles. But it gives you a system that has almost perfect parity. But again, a little bit less adherence to communities of interest and geographic and topographic boundaries. And then the last option, option five, was a little bit of a departure from all of the previous options. Because this option actually considers a change to the size of council. So this option moves away from the existing five ward system to a six ward system. What I would say is that a couple of things and and we talked to council about this in previous meetings as well. Is we didn't hear a lot about increasing the size of council. So typically, it's not something we would do unless we found that the options that we were providing. In a five wards status quo system, we couldn't adhere or couldn't meet the guiding principles. We didn't feel this was the case, however. This option largely came out of some of the feedback we heard about. District councillors elected at large or by wards. And what we wanted to do was almost be proactive in a sense and say. If there is a desire to go district councillors by wards. Something that might be considered as a six word option because it could be easier to divide. Two to two wards, you know, per councillor, if that was the desire. Again, we didn't consider this as a final option because of the reasons I mentioned. We didn't hear a strong desire to move upwards in in council size. We didn't hear a strong desire to have district councillors elected by wards. So again, we didn't think that this was better than the five word options we provided. So if we move to the next slide, a little bit of summary of of what we talked about, and then we'll get into some questions and and discussion. So why are we recommending option three? I think I went through most things, but just to provide again, like I said, a little summary. We think it's most balanced, we think it addresses all the identified challenges with the existing system. But still keeps things somewhat similar and so not a complete change. And it provides really good parity, not only seeing today's issues, but for future elections. And so said summarized, is really the most balanced system of the options presented. If we move to the next slide, a little bit more on on what I talked about on the other option, so why not other options? But we think again, for councils benefit. All of the. Our options, we think meet the guiding principles, we viable, we think they're, you know, somewhat defensible if they were appealed. So again, all are viable, but while options one and two, we thought addressed the most significant parity issues. Like I said earlier, we think that it could be really putting you or council of the municipality in a position. We're just coming back to do this again, once some of that growth plays out. Maybe not dissimilar from from two thousand and nine. An option that's going to give you, you know, where you grew from the seventies and and get you. Caught up with where growth was. But as we saw today, it's it's not going to give you a a option that addresses the future. So there's probably going to require some change. Even in the short term, while all the ward populations happen to be in in the twenty five percent percent acceptable range. Three of the wards were still around twenty percent away from average ward population, so. Again, not bad, but not fully addressing all of the issues and all the guiding principles. Option four, we just felt as a consultant team and and talking with staff as well. That is a real significant departure from the existing model. And we weren't really getting that much more in terms of of. You know, looking at all the guiding principles than we were getting with option three or option one and two for that matter. So we didn't think that it was worthy in a sense to to make the final cut. And I don't want to really belabor the point, but I think I just talked about option five and and why that didn't make the cut. So before we turn it over to some questions and discussion, next slide, I just want to. Go over what some or at least what we feel some of the options are. With regard to what council can do next and next steps. So again, from a legislative perspective, we have talked about this in the past. There's not a lot that the municipal act guides us in terms of this process. But it does allow a lower tier municipality to determine the composition of council. So council can decide the size and of council. They can determine how council is going to be elected, so we can stay as wards, they can move to an at large. General vote system, a hybrid system. Or what we, I I think what we're here mainly to discuss tonight. Is to divide or re dividing municipality and towards or dissolve the existing wards more that first part. To divide or re divide the municipality. So of the of what we presented tonight. Council can choose the final recommended option that the consultant team has provided and and choose as is. Council can ask staff to direct the consultant team to make changes or revisions. To the recommended option or to one of the other preliminary options. Or can outright choose one of the other preliminary options. They can adopt, as I said, a bylaw to completely dissolve the wards. Or can take status quo as action and that which means take no action at all. Should council choose to adopt new ward boundaries, it would have to pass a bylaw. And notice of that bylaw would have to be provided, these are all things we've already discussed with your clerk's office. And to note, any action respecting ward boundary reconfigurations. Including taking no action, but there's a little bit of caveats there. Could be appealed to the Ontario Land Tribunal. That appeal period starts as soon as the municipality passes the bylaw. And the appeal period lasts for up to forty five days. So I will stop there and see if there's any comments or questions and thank you for your attention.
Okay, well, thank you, Jack and Bob, we appreciate you coming today. I am going to open the floor for questions from council to the consultants. It's not the time for debate, we will have any questions. And then we will finish that portion and then we will have. A healthy debate, but we're not going to engage the consultants in our debating. So are there any questions for the consultant? Councillor Jorgensen?
Thank you, your worship. Jack, the the you said. That doing nothing is could be subject to appeal as well with with some conditions, can you expand on that a bit? What what?
Yeah, and Bob.
Keeping it the same, someone would have to bring forward. Something to the O L T, how would that work?
I'll take that on, Molly, Jack.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, as as we suggested earlier, it it's a decision that can be appealed but indirectly. Council deciding to take no action on this matter could be subject to a petition. And that petition, a petition essentially asking you to make a change. And and that is a process that you would need to deal with. Council could receive a petition and there are, there's a size limit that's spelled out in the act as to how many. Residents need to submit that petition. Council receives the petition presumably saying. The current system needs fixing, please adjust it. And if council says, no, thanks, we don't want to make a change. And you have, I think it's ninety days to make that decision, if you fail to act. Then the petitioners could go to the O L T. And essentially ask the O L T to make the decision for you. And and the O L T could say, fine, don't do anything, we're persuaded. But your consultants have said, we believe a change is needed and have provided other options. And that could in effect amount to the O L T making the decision for you. So that's what we could face if council says we're happy with the current system. Even though our consultants have shown us a number of reasons why we need to change it. So it's 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 an indirect process.
Councillor Murphy, did you have your? Okay.
Through your worship, I have a question for the consultant. How he came to his analysis of largely successful for communities of interest in the option three. I don't know if now is the spot or if it should be done later.
Yeah, no, I think, like I said, any questions because we we're not going to be going back and forth to the consultants while we're debating the options. So if you have, if you have some, if you have a question, yes, so now's the time, thank you.
Thank you. Specifically in the proposed proposal three, the Ward one councillor has typically been our master of industry. She's been or he's been in charge of the businesses in town, which include Gull Lake area, which is becoming very popular, the downtown core and the wharf. And option three, these like communities, you're putting them in charge of that urban area. And all of the Western Lake Muskoka Sunset Bay Bear Bay, the islands up to Taylor and Miller. As long as well as Glen Echo. It's they're organized and it's a lot of work and I really see an increase. And a split. Ward one, if I may, so how did you come to communities of interest in the proposal being largely successful?
Yeah, I'll I'll start this and then Bob, please jump in and add to this and thank you for the question, councillor and through you, mayor. So again, not perfect, not a yes, because. When we start to look at population, especially the concentration of population in Ravenhurst and some of the areas that you mentioned. It starts to get close to impossible to draw a perfect line. And incorporate all the things you said, incorporate communities of interest, incorporate topographic boundaries. Incorporate population and then industry and commerce as well. So yes, not perfect, but I think. We tried to consider all of those things the best that we possibly can. And then when we look outside of those particular wards. We think we're acknowledging, again, similar to the existing system. Some of those historical communities of interest, so so I I will be fully transparent. It's not perfect everywhere, but. That would have been a yes, largely successful, we see as meeting most of the standard. But acknowledging that we're always going to lose a little bit of that standard. When we're focusing a little bit more on achieving that that population parity. But Bob, anything you can add to to that answer?
I I would suggest that that this is not an appraisal of each and every ward independently. It's the whole picture, so we've got to consider, yes, urban. Ravenhurst, but also the remainder of the municipality. Of which I believe is reasonably well captured in this and and in many cases, an improvement on the current system. But the picture we're painting by calling it largely successful, as Jack suggested, it's not. That we've got everything right. There are some wrinkles in there and I think the dilemma, and we tried to address this, I believe in the consultations. Are there better ways of capturing that collection of interests that you're talking about? In a single ward or in fact, should they be in a single ward? And that comes back to the question of workload and related things perhaps. While in the past, a single councillor may have been able to handle all of those things. As the workload, as the complexity, as all those things increase. There may be a better case to say, let's divide that up. You may have some differences of opinion among the councillors involved. But it means the workload is better distributed across the 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 five individuals who are representing the wards. And the district councillors get involved in that as well. I'll turn it back to you.
Councillor, are there any other questions for the consultants? Councillor Jorgensen?
Thank you, I'm just, I I noticed in the option. Option three that's recommended that almost every ward number changes. It it was that a deliberate thing or an oversight because I think we could easily. Much more closely match the existing ward numbers. I'm just curious why why that was done in the option.
Yeah, thanks again for the question, councillor and again through the mayor. No, no deliberation or no deliberate intent on our part, really just to, you know, a couple of things. When we try to use the existing words, it starts to get very different, like the existing word numbers. Because as things start to change, it starts to get very difficult to keep the exact same word numbers and and every option. So we we kind of use it a little bit interchangeably. What's more important, I think, as part of that answer is if and when council makes a decision or a change on this. Absolutely, you can name the wards as you see fit. And what council thinks would be the most identifiable or perhaps the more. You know, consistent with what the the current naming is, so yeah, nothing deliberate and council can, you know, really name the boards whatever you want.
And that would be part of the bylaw.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have a, anybody else have any questions? Okay, I have one. How much did that large number of. Surveys out of Ward two influence the decision? Because that's that that seems like for the smallest ward, there certainly was a lot of response. And I know that, you know, we rely on the on, you know, the public information. But it seems it seems a little strange that that's so skewed out of Ward two. Does that, does that have anything to do with your recommendation?
Thanks, Mayor, for the question of the respondents of that question. Sixty one of the respondents were from Ward two.
Okay, no, I just, I I it does, I mean, I think it's the elephant in the room. Why, why was Ward, why did Ward two come out in such large numbers? So I think, you know, that I'm curious about that, so. It when the when the when the largest ward only had about seven respondents, it seems, it seems a little lopsided, but. Okay, great, just asking the question, Dr. Williams?
If I may, if I may, your worship, let's remember, this is not a popularity contest. We're simply providing you with some of the information. That some members of the community wish to convey to us. It's up to council to decide how much weight they want to put on that as was part of our scenario. We didn't do this to figure out what to recommend because we heard. A a certain pattern of of support. They were providing insight to how they perceive those options. And that's part of the background, it's not something that we would call definitive in any in any sense. It's there for guidance, you you presumably can decide amongst yourselves how much weight to put on that.
And if there is no other questions, I do have one more question. So we did hear a concern about, I think it's Ward one and Ward two shifting in your recommendation. And I know you've done a lot of these, you've, this is what you do, this is, you know, you're the experts in this. So my question is, have have, do you see it beneficial? To council as a whole for people to represent sort of diverse areas? So to have, you know, a bit of the urban area and a bit of the waterfront, like is that? Is does that give you a more objective perspective rather than just representing one sort of area? In your opinion?
We, Bob, do you want to start this? I I have some thoughts, but I know we get asked this a lot and I'll let you go first.
Ideally, we try not to have those kinds of mixes, if you will. Problem is, Ravenhurst is Ravenhurst. There are not that many places that are going to be exclusively one or the other, they're they're adjacent to one another, the. The distribution of dwellings and so forth is such that having a a ward. That is specifically designed to be a mix or otherwise. It's going to be very much an artifact of the way the population is distributed across the municipality. Certainly, you know, many in many municipalities, the the goal. Certainly, you know, many—in many municipalities, the—the goal is to have a deliberate mix. We don't normally see that as desirable, because it often means that the—the parts that are mixed together are not balanced evenly. And so some areas are going to be unrepresented or underrepresented, rather. So, you know, that is going to have to be a case of how Gravenhurst is—has developed and how it will develop in future. Over to you, Jack.
Yeah, the only—and I agree with that. The only thing I would add to that, and this is not a great answer, but it—it really depends, right? And, you know, usually, it—it's something that, when we talk about that, you know, unique need, or what are we trying to protect? And I'll use agriculture or rural sometimes as an example. In those cases, we hear a lot about trying to create a ward that, as much as possible, keeps that unique interest intact, because if not, it starts to get diluted by, let's say, a suburb, or—or something, a part of downtown, or something else. So—it really depends. But I agree 100% with what Bob said. In some places that are so concentrated, where population has grown so much, and it outweighs the rest of the municipality by this much, like your municipality, applying all those—those needs and principles to get exactly that becomes a little more difficult. And you're going to have wards that—that are not going to be as unique as you may like. And, I mean, I can even say, from doing these four years ago to today, we're seeing that mix, just because of the way places are growing, becoming more and more a part, I think, of wards.
Okay. So before we cut you loose and have our council discussion, I have one more question. How important, on a scale of one to 10, do you think representation by population is? Because I know, right now, that's not what we have. So is that—is—that—in your professional opinion, is that one of the most important aspects of—of this exercise?
I think—it—I think it has to be. I mean, I don't want to give you a one to 10, but it's up there. I mean, it's—it's, you know, it's more than a seven. Like, it's—it's definitely up there, and I think maybe the better way to phrase it is, it's fundamental. There's not a—you know, like we said at the beginning, and Bob speaks about this all the time, like, there's not many, you know, in a perfect—or not of trying to achieve some sort of—a well-balanced democratic system, you have to have representation by population, unless there's such a unique circumstance, like in Canada, the North, right? But other than those things, yeah, I think it's fundamental. Bob?
I would agree with that. I think the word "fundamental" is there. The Carter decision, which is part of the evolution of this concept of effective representation, made it very clear that population parity is not the only principle, but it's certainly very, very significant in—the—in the blend of things that we try to achieve in—in these designs. It's part of the mix. It—it's not the only thing.
Okay, Counselor Murphy, did you have another question for the consultants? Great, go ahead.
Thank you, through you. On page 16, I think it is, the last session we had together, we discussed how you came to 3.7 seasonal residents per dwelling. Did we ever get an answer for that?
Yeah, it's based on—I forget the name, but it's based on the report, as well as the development charge study that was done for the District of Muskoka and the town of Gravenhurst. And I have the name of the report somewhere, and I can find it in a second, but it's—yeah, so I will get you that. But consistent with all of the—the recent population forecast from the district, as well as the municipality.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? And we are—you—I'm hearing from my clerk, you are sticking around. I tried to get you out of here, but you're going to stick around for the discussion. We'll just have you turn off your mics, and then I'll open the floor for discussion here. We do have a motion on the table. Would you like me to read the motion, Counsel, again? Or we can put it up on the screen? Counselor Jorgensen?
Well, if I may, I would jump in, and, you know, the—the issue I raised about the ward numbering, I would like to see that reflected, I think, in—in the motion, because I think it's quite easy to—to do it with this option three. So perhaps we can—
Okay, so I believe that—
If you want me to pass an amendment, we can do that, or make an—a move an amendment.
Okay, so we're going to keep discussing, and then we'll come up with something. If you have—if there's a second or two, realign the numbers, Counselor Strength. Okay? So we'll put that on the table in a—in a minute, an amendment. Counselor Barney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. I'm actually not in favor of option number three for the following reasons. Historically, the main town has always been Ward One. Number two, the cost in changing these boundaries. And number three, the confusion for constituents on waterfront and the town wards. In the quote, in the preliminary evaluation, the suggestion that the ward with the most constituents gets the highest rate of inquiries, and I don't agree with that. I believe that development and activities factor in more with the questions, not the number of constituents. There's the assumption that inquiries are based on population, but really, they are based on current events. For example, I was asked many questions when Starboard was the news of the day, and then there was the Bay and beyond, and everything settles down when decisions are made. When a huge change is made, like Bay and beyond, all the wards get the questions. It does not matter how many residents a councillor has in their ward. Even district councillors get asked the same questions. I'm sure Counselor Robinson is getting more calls than usual regarding roads and—with more development going on in that ward, number three. These settle down, as everything does when discussions are settled. Councillors in other wards, other than Counselor Robinson—Robinson's ward get called as well regarding what is going on in Ward Three. In option three, Ward One is moved into the waterfront area, taking away from Ward Two, which is mainly waterfront. This means the councillor for Ward One is dealing with both town and waterfront problems. I feel that these are definitely separate—separate problems, and it is going to make more inquiries for the councillor for Ward One. The other assumption is the growth in the next 10 years. Where does one feel this growth will take place? I think that Ward Three and Four are wide open for more development, whether it is single-family houses, or even trailers, or some of these small houses that we talked about today. For affordable living and the obvious spaces would be Wards Three and Four. The idea of affordable or trailers for more affordable housing invites our new transportation system to develop and reach further to the outlying wards. The point in option two that I do appreciate is the boundary line, quote, which brings parity between Wards Three and Four, and that boundary is Highway 11. The main issue I can summarize from studying all the options is that we are all working for the same outcome, the betterment of Gravenhurst. Changing boundaries is not going to make that much of a difference, except, as I pointed out at the beginning, confusion and cost. In closing, for those reasons, I'm actually moving that council decide to turn down option three and accept option number two. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to—before we alter the—we're going to sort of take notes and—and have the discussion, and then we're going to put forward other motions as they come up. So I'm going to go to Counselor Hunter. And then Counselor Johnston, I see your light is on. Counselor Hunter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Can you hear me if I'm this far away?
Yeah.
I'm going to see my screen. Okay, thank you. This is my support for option two, and I'll tell you my reasons. I know one of our issues was Ward One was, you know, dealing with a lot of the events and—and urban sort of issues. Option Two allows Ward—current—what's current Ward Five to take on Pine Ridge, to take on Gull Lake, and also, you know, that Lake Association would be—would have one ward representative, which I think is helpful. Also, when I'm looking at the map, I think—when looking at option three, that ward councillor would be responsible for all the way around the bay, and I don't think that those constituents necessarily have the same concerns. And so I think you're dealing with—some—they do, but then others, they don't. And so I think then you're, you know, sort of splitting your time physically trying to get to all of those places, but also that those concerns are different. I do think it makes sense to have that Highway 11 boundary between Ward Five and Ward Four, because I think that, you know, the Doe Lake sort of area is just different than Wynwood and over, and Winhara and over. But when you move further south, Sparrow Lake, going across the highway into Kashi Lake, I think they share a lot more similarities. So to me, that makes sense. The population parity is very similar. We do see more growth happening in Ward Five, Ward Four, and Ward Three. So those are just my reasons, and—and that's my support for option two.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, your worship, through—you. So I want to start by saying that I, too, am going to support option two, and I'll give you my two main factors in—in doing that. Counselor Barney and Counselor Hunter have articulated some of mine. The first issue is the—how much weight? The consultants and a number of my colleagues talked about the—the number of people, and what ward they're in, and—and—and so on. And I understand the comment you made, your worship, and I agree. It—it's curious. But the—the difficulty that elected officials in government at various levels in Canada often face is finding a balance between what the public wants, or what it appears the public wants, versus what is the right decision to make. Individual candidates for elected office are chosen by the voters based on their individual assessments of those candidates, what experience they're bringing, what their judgment is in making complex decisions. System of government in the United States is called representative, and often—that often means that elected officials make decisions based on what—how big the pile is on this side of the desk. In Canada, our system's very different. It's called responsible government. And what that means in practical terms is simply this, that the voters in Canada trust those—the elected office to use their good judgment and experience in making decisions in the best interest of their community. So I—I raise that to address this issue about the number of people that—that took the survey, or didn't take the survey, the comments that were made at public meetings. And this particular issue regarding whether or not to alter the existing boundaries, option number two, from albeit a small sample, is the overwhelming choice of those surveyed. I'm not concerned about what ward they're in, I'm just talking about those—those raw numbers. One could argue that the sample size is too small, and may not—may not represent what the public at large want, and I agree. The difficulty here is acknowledging that the reason most people did not fill out the survey or attend the public meetings could be because they are satisfied with the status quo. That's—the—that's the difficulty we have as elected officials. I'll be voting for option two, and here are the factors I considered in making my—my choice. Similar to option one, with one necessary boundary change between Wards Three and Four, the boundary between Ward Three and Four along Highway is—is—is a very—it's the right thing to do. It does bring stronger parity between Wards Three and Four, and—and we talked about the—one of the—one of the five principles was about communities of interest, and—and that addresses that. Option two does not address long-term disparity in Wards One or Two. However, my—the projected population growth will occur in those—I—I question whether the projected population growth will occur in those numbers. For example, and I'll speak to this very briefly in a moment, but they indicated that the—the population projections in—in the future were based on the District of Muskoka growth strategy of 2024. And I spoke to that when it—when it—I said—when it was presented to district council. And what I said to the consultant was that, you know, the—the report was excellently done, but I said, here's my problem. We're living in a—in a world right now where change is so erratic and so volatile all the time. And—and I—the comment I made was, the—Bill Gates has famously said that, you know, there was a time not too long ago, certainly in my lifetime, where you could make projections 20 years out, and you'd be reasonably assured that those were going to fit. Now, I—I believe, and Bill Gates has said this, it's not my—I—I'm agreeing with Bill Gates, is that it's dangerous to make projections out beyond two years. And so I—I'm—in favor of option one, because there may very well be, as the consultants— it was an excellent report—the consultants may be right that there's going to be, over time, some problems with the—we—we're not—we're not addressing that population disparity. But the consultant also does say in the report, we need to monitor those—the population growth over the next few years. And if—if the—the population projections are such that we need to make some changes, the—the—the process allows us to do that. You know, i-i-to give you an example, the—coincidentally, we had—we had numbers in—in this report, projections up to 2034. And in the development charges package, we also had a statement that by 2036, the population is going to—and I—it's—it's—it's confusing, when we talk about one number, and it means everybody, and we talk about another number, and it means only permanent residents. I don't like when we do that. But—but in any event, the—the—the difference between those two, if you—if you factor them in so they're equal, is that one—the—the development charges document is saying that the population is going to increase by this, and the population increase in this report here is by this. So just in two documents, we already have disagreement about how that—how that population is going to grow. I'm satisfied that the—that the—the process will allow us to make changes if we do. So my final point's just—in—in bullet point, acknowledging that the sample of people who filled out the surveys is very small. I do note that the overwhelming choice is for option number two. That needs—that needs to be considered. It's—as the consultant pointed out, it's not a popularity contest, so I'm just saying that's a factor. I recognize that the Muskoka Lakes Association represents a significant number of residents, and as a body have indicated their clear first choice of option two. That's not my reason for voting for option two. I'm just saying it's a factor. In my view, it is vital to recognize that all residents are of a municipality, including those whose primary residence may be elsewhere, deserve equal consideration in this process, and I think the—the study recognizes that. And finally, as noted earlier, it may be that the small number of people who filled out surveys and attended the public meetings reflect a consensus among the majority of people, that most—most of the status quo within this issue is satisfactory for now. Thank you, your worship.
Counselor Strength?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I appreciate both of your comments. I—I didn't write anything formal, I just have been writing down words that sort of spoke to me. You talked about growth, Counselor Johnston. In all of the documents that we're talking about tonight, we're—whether it's big or small, we're growing. So I think that I—I am in support of option three. I was a little bit hung up on the—on the numbering as well, because there's no Feng Shui. It seems to go all over the place. With the other—with the other options, it—it goes counterclockwise or clockwise. So I would be—that's why I seconded to have the—the numbers altered. I think that the option number three shows good governance, it shows progress. It balances the playing field, because we have heard sort of consistently over the course of last term and the beginning of this term, that there are certain wards that have a little more activity than others, and this would—these new boundaries would certainly level things out. And, you know, change is scary, but it's progressive, and we—I think when we make these significant changes, they need to be impactful, and I think that that's what this option would certainly do for Gravenhurst and its growing future. Thank you.
Okay. So I have on the table, to make sure that there's Feng Shui. When it comes to numbering the—no matter what it looks like, we want to renumber it, right? So whether we go one, two, three, four, five, we— So whether we go one, two, three, four, five, we want it to sort of best in line with what is in current place. So this is the amendment that's on the table. I guess it's an amendment, but it's sort of an additive. And finally, that administration be directed to draft and submit the new Ward Boundary Bylaw, with streamlined and consistent numbering at the December council meeting to approve and enact for the 2026 municipal election. So I think I'm going to ask if there's any conversation on that. I think, yeah, Counselor Strength, yep. Okay, so I'm going to call the question on that. I think we're agreeing on that, on the amendment?
I would pull it on option three, or just?
No, just the amendment, no matter what we, no matter, I mean, if there's another amendment to come forward, we're still, we're just dealing with that portion, which was put on the table, was the renumbering, so.
I have nine votes in, but you guys are still touching. Do you want me to stop?
Okay, let's have a look. Okay, so, it carries. Okay, so seeing nobody else has their hand up electronic, I'm going to say my piece. First of all, I'm extremely disappointed about the size of council. I think that we could have really moved forward and done something really progressive. I was disappointed when they didn't change the 23 seats at district, and I thought this was an impactful way to change things there, because I thought we could be out of the gate and everybody could follow lead and then downsize their council, and then maybe we could reconsider. I think there are 64 politicians across the District of Muskoka, if not more, when the City of Toronto has 21. So that was one of my goals in putting forward this Ward Composition Approval last term, was to see some significant changes in the amount of bodies, and not to say that not everybody, you know, it has nothing to do with, you know, one ward or one, you know, person. I just thought that we could really, you know, come out of the gate and make some significant change to the community as far as governance go. So with that, there was no recommendation for that, but I did want that on the record. I would also say that I'm disappointed that district councillors will not be running, representing an area, because I think that's not a proposal. I know there's not an appetite around this table to do that. However, I think that it gives ownership to areas, it gives ownership to a councillor to represent an area, it gives the Ward Councillor somebody who they can automatically go to and ask for assistance, and I think you're just doubling the representative for that area. You know, people know who you are, they contact you, and so those are my two disappointments that are coming out of this. But with that, I'm prepared to support Ward three or two. I mean, I think it's up to council to decide. However, I just wanted to, again, I put this motion forward before the election in 2018, and I think it was important, and there's only two people at this table who have represented all of Ward one as it is now, as far as population and as far as the amount of events that take place in it, the amount of, wait, there was two people when you represented Ward one, representing Ward one, in 2010, yeah, so post-2010. And I can tell you honestly, it was, it was very, very, it was very, very busy. It was, and so I think part of it, part of the reason I wanted to see this was to share the load for that urban councillor. So with that, I just, again, nobody had their hand up, we have some hands up, but those are my points of view, so I just wanted to share that. So I will go to Counselor Morphy.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I share your wanting to reduce the size. I was really disappointed as well that they didn't come back with three wards and three districts supporting councillors and a mayor, and that would reduce us to seven. But it didn't happen, they didn't think that was the best thing to do, so here we are, and I will also be supporting option two.
Okay, Counselor Varney, did you have something? You had your light on?
Okay, thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. So I guess as Ward one councillor twice, yes, my ward is busy, but I do ask district councillors for help, and I don't feel like I'm doing this by myself. I feel very confident with asking the three district councillors for their help and suggestions. So I don't feel like, I mean, I may have the most constituents, but I don't feel like Ward one is just running me off my feet, and I feel, I go to senior staff and I ask for their help, and I don't feel like I'm losing any sleep over the number of constituents I have. So I don't agree that my problems in Ward one are any more than what Councillor Robinson has in Ward three, or, but they're very different to what Councillor Morphy has on waterfront, they're different problems. And I really feel like I said in my little spiel that for Ward one councillor to have to look after waterfront and urban, I think that is actually putting more work on their shoulders, whoever it is who's going to be Ward one in the future. I think that's, I think that's a completely different, it's apples and oranges, as far as I'm concerned, I just wanted to put that out. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you, Worship. I still personally support option three because of the improved parity in the future. I mean, we know where growth is going to go, we have official plan, we have policies that direct growth, and those policies do not direct growth to the rural areas, unfortunately. That's, the provincial policy statement says that, the district official plan says that, the Town of Gravenhurst official plan says that. Growth shall be directed to the urban areas, or actually to settlement areas, I think is the way it's. And what I'd like to point out in option three is all councillors have a mix of settlement areas, rural for the most part, and waterfront, because we can't specialize. I can't, I can't just specialize in the urban issues. I need to specialize in all of it. I need to be aware of what's going on, what those waterfront issues are. In my own ward, you know, I have a mix of settlement areas, albeit nowhere near the same density as the urban area, but I have a mix of rural, strictly rural, waterfront, and settlement areas. And I think option three provides that mix to all the councillors, where, and as I said, I think it does a better job of meaning the growth projections, and that's why I think it's been recommended to us, because it seems to manage the growth trends better than option two. So I don't, I don't buy the, there should be an urban expert, you know, or the increased density expert. We need to be, we need to be aware of all the issues. And don't forget, we, you know, we make decisions that affect all those areas. So we, our constituents call us for a variety of reasons. They don't always call their own councillor, because sometimes they don't know who their councillor is, I've run into that already. You know, that for some reason, somebody will call me and, you know, it happens to be in Ward five. That's fine, because those issues I can still speak to or direct them to staff to answer their questions. But I think option three does a better job of giving us all a mix of, a variety of communities.
Okay, Counselor Cairns, you did have your light on, but it's not on. Okay, so I'm going to go over to Counselor Strength, and then I'm going to ask, it sounds like somebody maybe wants to put an amendment, I mean, Ward three is on the, Ward three's on the table, so if we don't want Ward three, I mean, Ward three, option three, Ward, I've got Ward on my brain. So I'm going to go to Counselor Strength, and then we will, Counselor Strength, and then we will talk about an amendment if someone's going to put it forward, okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to add to what Counselor Jorgensen has just said, in that Gravenhurst, the Town of Gravenhurst is a diverse town, made of land and sea, and so we have to be well-versed in all of those different facets of what we have here. And option three is the option that best incorporates that. Thank you.
Counselor Hunter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess when I look at the map of option three, I worry that the issues that we're speaking about right now with a lot of the events and, you know, population density and everything for the Ward one councillor, I know it's confusing because now it's Ward two, but it's currently Ward five. It looks like we're just moving it over, do you see what I mean? No Feng Shui. Yeah, no Feng Shui. But I feel like we're just shifting the issue to this next, whoever this councillor would be, because now they're looking after all of what currently is Ward five, and then most of the town as well, all the way down through. So, and I get it, that then the current Ward one councillor would be, you know, moving down to the wharf and west a little bit more, but I worry that we're just kind of shifting it, and then this next councillor is going to be faced with the same issue. That's my concern.
To that, I would say, though, then we're in the same problem, that Ward, that the largest, most populous ward, we're in the same position in, with option two, we're back to 7,000 in one ward and four in another. So I think that's, I think those are the two fundamental differences. But with that, there's been a lot of talk for Ward two, so I'm going to ask, is there someone who's option two? Pardon me. Counselor Morphy, are you going to put forward a resolution or an amendment?
I was not, I was going to ask a question, but I'll just back, back off now.
Okay, so it does sound like there is some thoughts towards Ward two. Oh, okay, I need a reset. That there's some talk around option two, so, you know, there's no sense debating it any further if option two is the one that, you know, we might as well, somebody wants to move an amendment for option two?
I guess I am going to make the amendment to select option two as our choice in the Ward Review.
And I need a second, there? Counselor Varney, okay? So we're going to put it up on the screen? Okay, is there any further discussion around this? Counselor Cairns?
Thank you, Worship. I wasn't going to say anything, I've been here the longest, I guess, around this table, so I wasn't even going to say, I wanted to hear what everyone else had to say first. But I have to agree that option two seems to me to be the best option. Splitting the highway gives a better parity for people to understand where they are. I, too, have a problem with trying to add more onto Ward one, who already has, and I'm not going to say the most, the numbers, but has, you know, lots of events and different things that happen, so they're going to get the most calls. But adding on to Ward, some of Ward two, the Ward two that's here now, is not, in my opinion, with my experience, going to be a good move. When I was on council, and we had two councillors for Ward one, we took away the second Ward councillor for Ward one, because we were able to, I mean, I was Ward one councillor for several years, and I feel that it is busy, but it's tolerable. But to add in a lot of waterfront, which have totally different concerns, different, you know, they want different things than what the in-town people need or want, and their roads and everything else, their boat launches, I mean, those are the things that we're looking at if we turn this over, Ward one councillor in 2026 would have way too much work to do. So I agree with, and I have nothing else to add, because I agree with what's been said about bringing Ward two to the forefront. I think that the community is going to be happy with that, I think that we will be able to work together. And, I mean, I just, yesterday, just got a call for Ward four, Ward three, sorry. And, you know, they didn't know who to call, so they called me, and then I directed them to the right person, but I also got involved in the situation. So we're all going to be involved, and as a district councillor, I feel that I'll step in and help out in any way I can in any ward, to make sure that we're all on, working together and doing what's right for the town. That's who we work for, is the people in our community. And no matter how many people are in Ward one or in Ward two, three, four, five, it doesn't matter, we're here for all of us. And I did hear some of these people around the table, some of these councillors around the table said, we're one town and we work for the whole town. So regardless of how it is, we're all going to get called, but I think the separation of the highway is going to make good sense, and in the next Ward Boundary Review, I would assume that we would look at it and see if it's working. Again, we have to make changes, then we will, but in the meantime, I think that going with option two, and I almost said Ward two, option two is the best solution for this town right now. Thank you.
Okay, unless we are, is, there's going to be something new? Something new, Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. So in option three, it's actually divided by the highway, in option two, Ward three is not divided by the highway. So option three, with Cachey Lake in that, right now, Ward three and four, we share those lakes between the two of us. So this here, in option three, it would actually break that up, so one Ward councillor would just have that side of the highway, and the other side, which is, would be Ward three, I think in the color code, because it's changing, would just have the one side of the highway. With option two, actually, you're crossing over the highway. And I do agree with you, Counselor Hunter, about the Sparrow Lake and Cachey Lake, but also there are lots of lakes on the other side of the highway that could blend in with that as well, keeping that, you know, in mind. So I mean, I'm going back and forth with option two and three, but I do know that if you kept it on one side of the highway, I do believe that it might be easier for that councillor.
Well, thanks for pointing that out. I think we all had it wrong. I think we were saying that option two divided it by the highway when it's actually option three?
Right.
Oh, okay, so two different highways we're talking about?
Yeah, Highway eleven.
Okay, Highway 11, so depending on what highway you're talking about, is that good news? Okay, I'm going to go to Counselor Jorgensen, and then to Counselor Strength, and then we're going to call a vote on the amendment. Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, I mean, I was confused about the comments about Highway 11 splitting the wards as well. I'm not sure what highway then is we're talking about. In terms of the highway splitting, what then are we talking about the people who are supporting option two? I'm not clear on that, because it looks to me...
Just to clarify, Counselor Hunter, could you just clarify? Just, just to clarify, Counselor Hunter, could you just clarify?
Thank you, Your Worship. So splitting the highway between Ward, current Ward Five and Ward Four, that highway stretch, so when Harrah's on one side of the highway and then, um, Ward Four is on the other side of the highway, the boundary is the highway. But Option Two, as you move further south, Ward, current Ward Three and Ward Four, it starts to blend across the highway. Does that make sense?
So the lakes are divided? Okay. So in one, in one instant, lakes are divided, in one instance, they're not. So that's, okay, so-
Well, just to clarify, in, in Option Three, I mean-
Yes, please.
In Option Three, there is a small part of, like, the settlement area on, uh, the end of Cachey Lake is still included and with the ward to the west of the, the highway, which we would call Ward Three right now, 'cause there's a piece of it there. So, so Cachey Lake, the, the settlement area at the west side of Cachey Lake is, is, it's not split completely.
We're gonna put the map on the screen.
So again, uh, with respect to that, I don't see Highway Eleven certainly, what I'll call Highway Eleven north of the town. I don't know, can I use this? Or use the top button? Top button? So this area right up here, I don't think there's any difference between Two and, Option Two and Option Three. And down here, so we are, sorry, we're looking at Option Three here, right? So there is that small, see that small section there, which is the part of the settlement area at the end of Cachey Lake, is part of, over on this side anyway. But the issue to me, again, if we could, we just flashed at Option Two, we're talking about communities of interest, for example. So to me, having this ward intrude way over here, for example, you've got a community, a fairly large community on Clearwater Lake that has nothing to do with over here. So from a communities of interest point of view as well, at least in this, this area right here, um, as I say, these people have, have nothing to do with Killworthy or, I mean, they identify with Woshego, to be honest, and then, and south. Now, there's, again, in, in either of this area and certainly parts of Ward, this Ward over here, there's, there's very low population density throughout most of it, but there are those collections. And in fact, there are some other settlement areas. For example, over here, there's a settlement area in Barkway that's not shown. So they haven't captured all the settlement areas, but there is a sizable lake population, uh, in that area indicated. So if we're talking about, you know, if that becomes, uh, I, I still, I still say that, as the, the mayor asked the question and was pointed out, what has to be fundamental is the population parity. That's, that's, that's a given. And again, I would say Ward, or Option, I almost said, Option Three does it better than Option Two.
Okay, so I'm gonna go to Counselor Strength and then we do have an amendment on the table. So Counselor Strength?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When we get to vote, could we have a recorded vote, please?
Okay. On the amendment, yep, okay. Okay, so we will just let the clerk get ready for that. If there's no other discussion on the two, I mean, we're, we're at two versus three, I believe, right? So, so this will be, uh, Counselor Johnston, you had something? Just turn your mic on, please, thank you. Great, thanks, go ahead.
No, uh, uh, thank you, Your Worship. No, just, this has happened before. Could we have the motion up on the screen? Because everybody needs to be very clear, when you vote no or yes, what you're doing, because there's been confusion on this before.
When you're voting on the amendment, you're voting to replace Three with Two. And then we will go back. So be it resolved that the motion be amended to replace Option Three with Option Two. So. But that's not the final motion. That's still yet to come. So, Madam Clerk, conduct a recorded vote.
Thank you. I am gonna try something new and change your access to open. So you should be able to speak without, um, needing the mayor to grant access. Okay. Counselor Robinson? Oh, so, no, I forgot a step. Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Hunter?
Yes.
Counselor Morphy?
Yes.
Counselor Jorgensen?
No.
Counselor Strength?
No.
Counselor Varney?
Yeah, yes.
Counselor Cairns?
Yes.
Mayor Lorenz?
No.
You forgot to put in your votes.
Oh, I didn't know you had to.
Yes.
We hadn't done that before, Madam Clerk, so-
The motion was five to four, the motion carried.
Okay, so I think we've already dealt with the amendment on the numbering. So unless there's anything further, we've been at this for an hour and a half. Um, I'm just gonna call, unless anybody has anything to say about wards and options and I think we'll call the question. Is that, is, does anybody have anything to add on the final motion? Okay, all right, so we will put it on, up on the, uh, screen and I'll ask everyone to vote, please. And that carries. Okay, so, uh, I, we weren't gonna take a break for a while. I had one planned, but we're just gonna take a five-minute bio-break and then we're gonna come back, 'cause we do have another consultant here. And, uh, so if you can come back in five, in five minutes, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay, well, we're gonna get, uh, we're gonna get started. Okay, so, um, moving, moving right along. Um, 2025 Development Charges Bylaw. Now, I think we have, um, yep. You're gonna print me another one of these, I think. Be resolved that Report Number FIN 202416 RE 2025 Development Charges Bylaw be received for information and that the 2025 Development Charges Bylaw be brought forward for adoption by council with rates and phase-in as outlined in Option Three. So, uh, we do have our consultant with us today, um, but we'll go to Mr. Jeffrey first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma, Madam Mayor and through you. Um, I, there is a lot in the report. I'm not gonna cover every single item and point in the report. I, I'm gonna run through the options, uh, and then we'll entertain questions. And, and with us today, we have Andrew Mirabella, in person, uh, with Hempson Consultants, who, who prepared our development charge study and our bylaw, so. So Option One is the maximum calculated rate. Uh, it's purely, uh, from a financial funding model, the option that, uh, to, uh, to choose as, as a treasurer, normally. Uh, it's more apt to ensure the tax requirements of the future are closer to a two percent levy for capital, uh, rather than a three percent, uh, levy. Uh, it also provides capacity for a second major project in those outlier years of years six through 10, uh, without adding any new external debt. However, uh, it does represent a hundred and forty percent increase from our, uh, very low current rate. Option Two is reduced. Again, it's more apt to, uh, from a tax point of view, to stay the course at two percent rather than three percent. Uh, but it has capacity only for the one major project with no new debt. Uh, however, it's still an increase of eighty percent, uh, from our current low rate. Uh, I've, we've put in that option that we would be open to Section 27 agreements to developers, ready to expedite, expedite their projects for attainable units. Option Three is the recommended, uh, and administration believes the optimal, optimal balance. Uh, it's the reduced rate and it's phased in over three years. Again, uh, this provides incentive to all developers to expedite their, uh, projects and no Section 27 agreements would necessarily be needed. Um, administration likes, uh, the district's first-time homebuyer grant. And I think it gives a laser beam approach to address the attainable housing continuum uh, without the risk of benefiting speculators and wealthy investors. Uh, also in Option Three, uh, there, again, the commercial and industrial development charge stays zero-rated. Uh, and of course, this is to support our economic development strategy that's coming forward later, so. So those are the three options. And again, um, be happy to entertain, uh, any, any questions that you might have.
Okay, so, Council, are there any questions for Mr. Jeffrey or? I'm gonna go to Counselor Jorgensen.
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess just clarification of a couple, couple things. Um, commercial accommodation, could I get a definition of that? Also, could you expound on what a Section 27 agreement is for us? Thanks, I'll start with that.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Jorgensen. So, um, the first question was, commercial accommodation. So, uh, the, it's the, it could be the hotels, motels, um, and that are for rent, uh, on a daily basis. Uh, so it is being, it is being, um, the development charge is the same as the residential development charge. Uh, and a Section 27 agreement, essentially, primarily, we've, we've seen it in the use as a, a prepayment agreement. Uh, but it can, it can entertain any deviation from the current legislation that it- legislation that exists in, in the province of Ontario right now. So, if, if we wanna do anything other than in the legislature, but it is an, an agreement that's negotiated, so ideally, there's, there's things in both parties when we do negotiate a Section 27 agreement. I'll hand it over to the expert, though, Andrew Mirabella, if, if I could, to Madam Mayor, just to correct me if my understanding is wrong.
Okay, well, welcome. I don't think you were probably expecting such a late night, so we appreciate you joining us. So, floor is yours.
Thanks, Mayor, for the question. So, a Section 27 agreement, or a Section 27 in the Act allows municipality to enter into a prepayment agreement or a deferral agreement, which effectively allows DCs to be prepaid or paid at an earlier time than otherwise than, than the prevailing rate, or at a later time than payment of building permit. So, there is flexibility through that agreement, or through the development of agreement, to do such, such an act. And some municipalities employ it, but it's very scoped to any specific policy that the municipality might have in place, and it's certainly not typically used for a widespread use on an application-by-application basis.
Okay. Any, okay, subsequent?
Thanks, your worship, through you. So, to be clear, then, I think I heard Mr. Jeffrey say that in Option Three, we wouldn't need Section 27 agreements, yet in Option Two, he would expect them, so could you clarify that for me?
Mr. Jeffrey?
Yes, through you, again, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Jorgensen. So, again, what we're trying to do is looking, looking at the housing needs balance and trying to come up with a feature that, that would best suit, or try to fill the gap of the attainable property owned on the housing continuum. And so, the Section 27 agreement would allow, for example, a developer to enter into an agreement, essentially to freeze the rates, or, or take advantage of, of rates, provided they were willing to expedite or prepay those rates, so. So, you see in Option Three, then, those, those low rates are being phased in over three years, so, so all developers are basically getting the advantage of low rates in, in those first, first three years. And of course, and, and so, any, any developer, not just one, any developer who comes forward and wants to expedite the process can, can do so, just using the existing rates in place.
Okay, Counselor Morphy?
Thank you, through you, your worship. This is still a 26.7% increase over our current, and I'm gonna talk to the very elephant in the room of our MP, just lambasting the district. The car just hit the building. About a 30% increase. Do we have an appetite to go up this high, 26% increase?
I think that was a rhetorical question, wasn't it, for, save for debate time? Yeah. I will ask if there's questions, and then we'll talk about debating in a minute. Counselor Johnson, you put your hand up, is, is it a question? You have to press your thing, so I can give you access to your mic. Great, thanks.
Your worship, no, I just, you're right. I just wanted to mention to, to Counselor Morphy that, that's, that's totally wrong. That's totally wrong. What I will do is, I will share with you, I have copies, the, the letter that the six area mayors and the district chair sent to that individual. That's totally wrong. Pardon? He was wrong, yes.
So, we will talk about that at debate time, or, or not. So, we will stick on the subject of the DCs. I, I did, just for my interest sake, I'll share with you, pull up what Vaughan pays, $95,000 for a single, in Vaughan, development charges. I just Googled it, just for comparison's sake. So, obviously, development charges don't hinder development, because, I don't know if you've driven through Vaughan lately, it's exploded. So, just my little bit of information. Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you, your worship. So, that sounded a little bit, a little bit like debate there, to me. Just saying. Yeah. I read in the report that development charges are a cost of doing business, so I'm curious why we, in Option Three, have eliminated the non-residential fees. What's, what's the thinking behind that? Because if it's a cost of doing business, why isn't everybody paying it?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, to Counselor Jorgensen. So, we did the analysis, and in the last five years, we might have lost out on five development charges in the commercial and industrial area. And the, we know this, because we had to collect them for the district, we didn't collect, we didn't do any administration to our own benefit, but we collected them for the district. And, and the district's numbers, I believe, were quite small, that we collected. Just, just a little over $12,000. So, the cost, or the opportunity cost, or the foregone revenue of, of having, collecting non, non-residential development charges for commercial and industrial, is not that big. So, so again, and I believe it's addressed later on in our economic development strategy that we're proposing, so, not a big cost. There is, of course, the town of Bracebridge did introduce them, they're quite low, and the, really, from a financial point of view, for us, the, the only advantage of introducing them at this time would be just for future purposes, not making the introduction of them as, you know, such a large increase at that point in time, so. But at this time, it was felt that there was, there, the, the cost of foregoing them again in this development charge bylaw is very small, and so, a small investment that could make a difference in our economic development strategy.
Okay. Counselor, are there any other questions? Okay, so I'm gonna go over to Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not a question, but just to dovetail what Mr. Jeffrey's just referred to. The other, the other angle that we, we talked a lot about, the, the commercial element of the bylaw, and yes, a, a good chunk of the, the argument for why we landed where we did was the, the, the cost being quite negligible. The other angle is that there's, we're so limited as far as commercial development lands for commercial development, which may or may not be addressed through a future official plan review, but at this point, there's, there's such limited opportunity to actually develop anything overly substantial, that, again, it contributed to the, is it a worthwhile exercise at this stage in the game, argument that we, Mr. Jeffrey and I had for weeks, so.
Okay, Counselor, is there any more discussion? I have a question, or not discussion, so we can get back to that, but is there any other questions? Because I have one. So, we received a presentation from a developer that, you know, wanted to, wanted us to adopt a model where, you know, up to a certain amount, they weren't considered affordable, but they were considered, you know, in their opinion, attainable. Or, is there room to consider that, or is that, in your opinion, not something that we should be looking at?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, for the reasons that I outlined in the report, I don't think it's, it's an option that administration favors. We like the, you know, again, the approach was to fill that attainable property ownership on the housing continuum, to fill that gap, and we, we believe that we, we like the district. We like the district approach and their, and their project of giving new home buyers a, a grant, and specifically, you know, as their principal residence, and so, I'll leave it at there.
Which all of Gravenhurst taxpayers are supplementing through their district taxes, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. 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 Great. Are there any other questions? Otherwise, I'll call the question. Oh, Counselor Jorgensen?
Just, in, in general, I'd like to hear, with this Option Three, I mean, we heard through our, our housing needs study, that the, a, a sizable amount of rental, the rental, available rental properties are actually homes that are being rented, as opposed to purpose-built rentals. So, what, quite frankly, I'm more, I'm more interested in, in promoting the growth of our rental stock. So, what would you say are the incentives that are, that will be built into the system to promote rental stock in general?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Jorgensen. So, yes, the, the provincial, through some of the statutory changes, gives discounts now to rental properties, and, and as well, the option to defer payments, so freeze, freeze and defer the payments over five or six years. So, again, giving builders predictability and, and low development charges in terms, so that's for, for more units, so smaller than that, often, we do, we do see, of course, the secondary suites and the additional dwelling units are, are also exempt. Any additions of those, the development charges are, are exempt, so. So, I, I believe that that rental, the renters is, is served well at, at the provincial level, and, and, you know, I, I think, I think the discussion has been, you know, whether we can do something at the development charge level at the, the lower tier. I don't believe that there's anything more that we can enhance, other than perhaps our, our community improvement plan does as well give development charge rebate to certain mixed uses and residential uses in the, in the, the improvement area. So, there are, and that can be enhanced later on, it doesn't need to be addressed in, in the development charge right now.
Okay, I'm gonna go over to Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Jeffrey just sort of touched on it, but there's, there's an opportunity, it may have been discussed in the housing needs assessment as well, that we evaluate the idea of a, a separate community improvement plan that's specifically geared towards targeted housing that are, are needed in the community. So, I think there's an opportunity there as well, as, in addition to a number of the sort of inherent reductions or features in the bylaw that are, that are there currently. So, an opportunity down the road for our, our action working group, or whatever it's going to be referred to as, to take a look at.
Okay. A subsequent question. Before you get there, those, those accessory buildings that we saw today, they would have, like, would they, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have charges, would they? No, okay, they're exempt, so I think that sort of answers your question, as to what are we doing to enhance rental, because those, you know, those are pretty good. Okay, go, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to clarify that, that some more, then. So, in terms of what I'm seeing for rates for apartments, if they meet provincial rules and regulations, then those would be eliminated, potentially. Is that what I'm hearing from you? That where the, the province would, where provincial legislation would preclude us from collecting, for example, on ARUs, because ARUs aren't, you know, it, it's not specifically in this schedule here, but where the province says you can't charge, then there's the potential that these people don't pay those, those charges, is that what I'm hearing?
Andrew, do you wanna address that?
Yeah, absolutely, through the mayor, so that, that is correct. The legislation itself would exempt the ARUs, so if you meet those requirements, you would be exempt by, by legislation. And further to that, the rates in the bylaw for, such as apartments, if you do meet the criteria for purpose-built rental, and you meet the bedroom thresholds, whether it's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or three-bedroom, you would get a, a range of discounts, so three-bedrooms would be upwards of 20%, 25%, sorry, and then 15% and 20%, if you're a one- or two-bedroom. So, long as you meet those eligibility criterias, then you get the discount on your, on your DC payment for those, those units, which are, are also in the, aligned in the bylaw itself, but it's also by way of legislation.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for that. All right, so, we are going to, I'm gonna call the question. Oh, I mean, we can have a debate, I mean, but the question is on the table. We, I, I'm not sure, yeah, I mean, do you want, do you wanna speak to it further, or? Okay.
Thank you, your worship. You, you know, I'm not a big fan of development charges, I think that's been, been clear. I think, although, you know, we, we have to balance the need for money for our capital improvements as a result of growth, I've said before that there's, there's no, even though, as, as has been said, you know, there's, you're still gonna have growth with development charges in, in certain areas, like Innisville, that's been, been brought up, there, there's a, a huge demand for housing and huge growth there, despite the much higher development charges. But the, the fact is, in our community, we're trying to balance new housing and the cost of that new housing against how much money we're basically collecting upfront, as opposed to increasing our assessment and collecting it through taxes in, in subsequent years. And we're, we're getting that in addition to these development charges. And I think Counselor Morphy was still, as I am, a little, perhaps not thrilled with a 26% increase in development charges. Now, I, I can see in the Option Three that it is, it is getting phased in, but we can't forget that on top of that, there's, there's the district charges, and we don't have a housing, or a, a school charge, I think, like some municipalities do. But I'm also, you know, to me, again, the, the optics, if you will, of not including, of, of zero-rating commercial, given the environment... of, of zero-rating commercial, given the environment we're in, where we want to build homes, and in particular, we want, I think, much more rental accommodation. It, the optics of saying, well, you know, and, and, yeah, we don't have a lot of industrial or, or commercial space being built, but the optics of saying, yeah, but, but, so we're going to, clearly, we're, we're, the only reason that we would zero-rate that is to incentivize it so that people will build some industrial or commercial space. Well, we want to do the same thing. We, we want to incentivize the growth of homes. And in terms of economic development, the, the most important thing we need in Gravenhurst is to increase our population and have a place for all those workers to live. That's the most, that, to me, is an overriding factor here. And regardless of, you know, the, the, the cost of, of housing in Gravenhurst is probably less than in Innisville by a long shot, but it's still, development charges does, they do make the cost of housing more expensive. There's no two ways around it. So I'm, as I said, I, I think I, I can't support this if, if, if we're demonstrating that we want to incentivize the non-residential rate here. So I, I would, quite frankly, if we're going to pass this development charges by law, I would want to see something in there, but I'll leave it there.
Okay, anybody else have anything to say? Counselor Cairns?
Thank you, Worship, and through you. Thank you, Randy, for those comments. I have, I feel the same way with the district's development charges, and then on top of that, increasing the town. We've just started to grow in this community. I mean, we've started to really expand our growth. We've, you know, added in several homes on, in Ward Five, and continue to do so in Ward Five. And it's because our development charges were capped at a, at a very low fee. And I think that, is this the time now that we put them up again? And, and, you know, that's, that's a huge percentage to go up. And even though it's phased in, I think that we need to really think about not charging as much. I think we want to continue to see growth in our community, and I don't want it to see it stop. We have development, developers in this town who have asked for certain things that I don't see that, that, you know, the affordable housing. And I, I don't like to call it affordable housing, I like to call it attainable housing, because affordable housing and attainable are two different words. But attainable means that a young family possibly can attain a home if, if the fees and charges are not as much. And, and like, over the years, I've seen our community grow, and we want to continue to grow. And if we stop and, and add in development charges that are, that are exorbitant, we're, we're going to see our town stop growing again, and then we'll be left in the background, is my opinion. I want to see us grow, I want to see us to continue to grow, to bring in further retail. We need retail in this community dearly, and we need accommodations for those who would like to work in retail in our community, or open up a new business. So I think it's really important that we think hard on this one. And, and I just wonder how, if there's a different way of, of, you know, implementing development charges, but not so extravagant in the numbers.
Counselor Hunter?
Thank you, Worship, through you. I guess when I look at what the development charges go towards, I do sit on the library board. We are out of space at the library, we need more space. Growth pays for growth. There's roads, there's fire protection, parks and recreation. We have a Trails Master Plan that we want to expand. So when a new development is being proposed or coming to Gravenhurst, and we know that these things are going to be impacted, growth pays for growth. And so that's, those are my comments.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to have some comments before I let, go back to Counselor Jorgensen, if nobody else wanted to speak. So I couldn't agree more with Counselor Hunter. I think that we're talking about $10,000 on a $500,000 purchase. Think of all the things that we could have done up until this point if we had been collecting reasonable development charges. We hear all the time, we have, we need this, we want this, we, you know, we want pickleball courts. Well, we don't have, we don't have the money, because we haven't been charging development charges for that. Wouldn't it be nice to have been able to say to the, the library, who are bursting at the seams, boy, over the last 10 years, we've collected 2 million bucks for you, here you go, you know, get, get moving? Most of the affordable, including, including purpose-built rental, all of those things are excluded. So it's, it's, we're not being, we're not being transparent when we're saying that this is going to affect people who are working, you know, can't come and work here because they can't, nobody's building purpose-built rental. I would argue that, you know, these, these units are on every single one of us, and we could all, we could all probably put one in our backyard and, you know, increase, I, I don't know, it, it takes a village, but, you know, not, and if you think that a developer is, is, is not profiting that difference, you're out of your mind, because people don't build things. Builders, developers don't develop out of the goodness of their heart. I mean, we have a lot of people who invest, you know, but they're builders, they make money at it, and they're not going to pay it forward if they're not paying it. You go look at Vaughn, like I said, 95 million, $95,000. I mean, you couldn't pay me that to go and live there, but I think that, I don't know, I just, I don't think that it's absurd. Bracebridge just passed some, I think, and I'm not sure where they landed. 61 for a single. I mean, that's, that's not far from where we're at. You know, so I, I think you have to, I think it's $511 is going to go to the fire department on a, on a new, on a new build. That's not, I don't think that's extravagant, and I think our, our fire department rep would agree. So those are my comments, I will go back. I mean, we fundamentally disagree, Counselor Jorgensen. So I will, I, I don't think, if, if we were asking for this on affordable units and purpose-built rental and all of those things, I would agree, but we're talking about housing that's built to, to make money, so. Counselor Jorgensen?
Thanks, Your Worship. Something else I just want to point out, the reason I really don't like development charges is because the development charges are exactly the same on a $5 million build as they are on a $500,000 house, where our property taxes, you pay a lot more when that $5 million assessed house is built. We get, collect a lot more in property taxes, but they pay exactly the same. So it's, in terms of building a high-end home, development charges become less of a factor. In a smaller, you know, more affordable home, they, they are a significant factor. There's just no getting around that. You know, it's not based on your ability to pay. Our property taxes are based on the assessed value. So if you have a $5 million place, you're going to pay a lot more in taxes. The, the problem I have with, in general, with development charges, the concept is, we want you to move to our committee, just, our community, just give us five years of tax upfront, and then you, you're allowed to live here, which seems ridiculous to me. So I'll leave it there.
Okay, one last point before, I mean, what's $10,000 amortized over a 30-year mortgage? Like, if we're talking about, if we're talking real, like, if that's, you know, it's, it's pennies a year. So anyway, I'm going to, unless there's any further discussion, I'm going to call the vote, and we'll put the, put it up on the screen. Be resolved that Report Number FIN 202416, RE 2025 Development Charges By-Lobby Received For Information, and that the 2025 Development Charges By-Lobby Brought Forward for Adoption by Council with Rates and Phases in, as outlined in Option Three. So unless there's any further discussion, please vote. Oh, that carried, thank you. Okay. So next up, we have, I believe, I'm a little discombobulated here. Oh, here we go. It's moved by Counselor Cairns, seconded by Counselor Hunter. Be it resolved that Report Number DV 202494, RE Economic Development Strategic Plan be received for information, and that Committee accept the Economic Development Strategic Plan Priority Actions for Implementation.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. I'll just-
Sorry, Director Halford.
Thanks. That's, thank you very much, Worship. So after about six months of work, six or seven months of, of work, we are extremely happy to be before you this evening with the new Economic Development Strategic Plan that will guide corporate economic development portfolio for the next five to 10 years. We're pleased to have with us this evening McSweeney and Associates, here to go over a high-level summary of the document. And Manager Taylor and I are here after the presentation to answer any questions, along with the consultants, if there are any. So I think we'll just turn it over to Nancy and the team from McSweeney to talk about the report.
Okay, thank you for that. Great, welcome. Let me just make sure we can hear you. Nancy, I'm not sure we can.
Thank you.
Oh, there we can now, yep. And Kevin, we'll just check your sound. Okay. Oh, now we can.
That sounds good.
Okay. So I'm not sure if you have a presentation, or?
I do. Okay, I'm going to share the screen now. All right. Looks like it's up there. So thank you, and for inviting us to the, to present on the Economic Development Strategy. We had a really great time when we were going through this, like Melissa said, that in the last six months, we've been going through the process. So just to start off, because I know it's been a long night, just to go over the strategic plan to start off with. Really, the purpose of the strategy is to help, as Melissa said, help guide the future decisions in economic development and community development, really to set that foundation for economic success in Gravenhurst, and identifying those core aspects of economic development that need consideration. Just so that you, I'm sure you do understand, but that economic development is a long-term project. It's not a, or a program, a long-term program. So it's not just a project. So it really, having that sort of base is really important to be able to build from. And just to say too, that we have taken into consider, consideration what you have been doing over the last number of years, and just building, the strategy is built on those, on what you have been doing. So it is a five-year Economic Development Strategic Plan and Action Plan. We had a number of deliverables to provide to you. Number one is the action, is the Economic Development Strategic Plan. The second one is, we were asked to do, create a vision and key values and guiding principles. We also did an informal investment readiness assessment, which is really looking at your web information that you have, that's specific to investors. So it's not just sort of generally, it's specific to investors. So we look at how you track your land, how you, what kind of land you have, also your website, just various things for that. We also did an informal industrial and employment land review. We align, and this strategy also is aligned with the Gravenhurst Strategic Plan. So the other big pieces that we did, and Kevin is here to answer any questions on this at the end, is the retail market analysis and community situational analysis, which I think you have copies of those. So when I talked about the vision that we created, and this was based on input from staff, and we had had a staff meeting to discuss this, it's, Gravenhurst will fulfill its economic potential. So building off its unique history and natural assets, supporting growth of business and economic success. So it's a fairly high level, but we think it covers what you need to be doing. So how did we get here? We started off with discovery. So basically, what we do is we go through and we create this community situational analysis, which hopefully you've had a chance to look at. We do a document review, which covers many documents, both town and region. We, as I said, did an informal investment, industrial and employment land review, and the informal investment readiness. So this is our quantitative information that we collect. And as I said, there's a retail, there was a retail market analysis done as sort of a separate document, and it's specific to the retail market. So looking at those quality, we, that, we actually met with some retailers and had a focus group with them to find out a little bit more what they were, what their issues were and concerns. The next thing we did was more of a qualitative analysis, and that was through stakeholder engagement. We did a number of one-on-one interviews, we had focus groups that were in, in person, we had an online survey that was up, and there was also a staff priority setting session. And that staff priority setting session was basically to talk to key staff members to, to find out what really the priorities are for staff to have, to move forward on economic development. The next was when we basically are taking the, all of the information we've collected, and we develop the actions. So the first thing that we do is SWOT analysis. We call it a score, strengths, challenges, opportunities, aspirations, and results. And we present that at the working session. And throughout the working session, what we're trying to do, we have a number of themes that we go over, and what we're trying to do through the strategic, or through the working session, is to develop some draft actions that are doable and realistic through the people that are attending. And then the last thing that we do is an implementation plan. The implementation plan is not part of the report, but it is a document that is used for, to be able to create work plans year by year. So in the implementation plan, it will have each of the actions, it will have who's going to be the lead on the, the action, who will be the partners or to help out, the financial implications and timelines. So the, really, the, the Economic Development Strategic Plan was really built through community collaboration and staff collaboration. So lots of good information that came through. So now we're at the important part, and these are the priority goals and actions. I'm not going to go, obviously, through every action, but we will go through the goals. The first goal is around reviewing and realigning the investment attraction program foundations. So what this is, is really having, being able to have all that information that's required for investors. Everything that they're looking for needs to be in place, so that when they're coming to the community, they want to know about land, they want to know about development charges, they want to know about hydro costs, they want to know various, like, as much as they can, and having current information is really important. So really, so when we're, we're talking about what the community, what the, the town of Gravenhurst needs to do, is just really have, make the community a good place to invest, make it easy, make it welcoming, that sort of thing. And so then investors feel that it's a really easy process to go through, and that they're, they're being welcomed into the community. The second goal is around supporting local businesses, and we heard that earlier, that small businesses, the backbone of the community, is entrepreneurial- is entrepreneurial ventures, provide jobs, and are often strong supporters of the community. And we know that there's a really great, you've got a great number of businesses in the community, but they could be really supported a lot more if they have, with that year-round population. The third one is around fostering heritage, arts, and culture. There was this real thought that there was, you have a really unique history. You've got some amazing cultural, cultural assets that really differentiate Gravenhurst from everywhere else, and that you've got this really thriving artist community. And so how can that be expanded, and how can that be celebrated? And the fourth one is around tourism. And we know that tourism is a significant focus of the Economic Development Division right now. So we did talk, we did try to align, we did align the Tourism Destination Plan and the Economic Development Strategy so that everyone's kind of working from the same page. And the last goal is around supporting the retail sector. So as I said, there's, there is, we did the retail market study. And so these came out, these actions came out of the retail sector study. And so we, so there are a number of actions that are both, that you'll find both in the Economic Development Strategy as well as the retail strategy. So at the end of the day, this is your strategy. It's not ours, it's your strategy. It's community-based. It was confirmed by Economic Development Staff. And we developed, we developed through the community and through Economic Development Staff 44, 45 doable and realistic actions to accomplish over the next five years. And that's it. If you have any questions, short and sweet.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. I think we all like doable actions. I think it's neat to look at the list and check them off. Now, I'm going to go over to our Economic Development Manager, Amy Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. So just in addition to what Nancy has highlighted, I think it's important to note that through this entire process, we had a lot of excellent feedback and collaboration from all areas across town, that some of the key issues that we are going to be looking at in the immediate future and that have been actioned in our 2025 budget are things like reviewing the BIA status and how we can strengthen and support that area, looking at our CIP program and making some streamlined changes to that program, looking at how we can better leverage some of our municipal accommodation dollars to support things like our Public Art Committee, to put into action things from our Recreation Parks and Trails Master Plan. I think I always get that in the wrong order, but, you know. As well as moving forward the Warf revitalization action items and the Tourism Destination Plan items. So really, the crux of the whole strategy for us as staff is refocusing and realigning our core foundation in that we've been scattered in response to many COVID challenges, in response to some of our organizational changes in the communities, such as the Chamber of Commerce, the BIA, Explorers Edge, Muskoka Tourism. So for us, this is kind of getting back to our roots, re-engaging those community members who have voiced that they want to be part of a community of Gravenhurst. And it doesn't matter whether they're a BIA, a South End, a Leicester Square. They just want to all feel that they're engaged. And this gives us a better focus to basically rebuild the foundation and move forward where we feel we're actionally, actioning some items. And while 45 actions seems, maybe seems like a lot, the reality is that our Economic Development Work Plan usually has about 94 action items in it a year. So 45 is a nice break for us. And we're looking forward to how we can better empower some of our other divisions and departments to make other strategy action items come to life. At high level, basically, last point is the community analysis brings us into alignment with the district growth strategy projections. Make sure that we have a document that will help those people looking at a five- or 10-year plan to see where our community is going. It essentially updates our community profile, which was last done in 2018, I believe. And then the retail market analysis, again, just strengthens where should we be marketing? Who should we be bringing into our key nodes? And how can we roll out an attractive and efficient investment attraction plan? So those documents are now part of our arsenal, and we are excited to kind of get back to the basics in 2025.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Counsel, does anybody have anything they would like to ask the consultants or Ms. Taylor? Okay, Counsel Jorgensen?
Thanks so much. There was a lot of reading here, to say the least. Something that surprises me, and I'm just hoping you can comment on this, is one of the goals is to focus on the retail sector. Yet, the construction sector, your data seems to indicate that the construction sector has more workers in it than the retail sector in Gravenhurst. And common sense to me would dictate that construction workers make a lot more money than, than retail workers. So why is there no goal to target improvements in the construction sector of Gravenhurst?
Okay. So I guess part of the retail sector is, we've, it's in the report because it is actually, it's also in the retail gap analysis. So it was based on the retail gap analysis, and that's why it's in there. We didn't do anything on construction. So if we hadn't done the retail gap analysis, it may not have been quite as, as fulsome, goal five. But because we did that, and we, we sort of spent more time on that, that became a big part of it.
Subsequent?
So I guess the question for, for staff then is, is there something that we are going to do to, to target the construction sector? Because it seems to me, the best thing you can do, you could do for the retail sector would be to have more highly-paid employees that get to spend their money in the retail sector. And to me, the no-brainer is targeting that construction center, sector for support.
Director Halford?
Thank you very much, your worship, through you to the counselor. But, and I may turn it to Manager Taylor as well. But I did want to focus in on that, that the Economic Development Strategy, one of the main driving forces behind it was the council's recently adopted strategic plan, which identified wanting to focus in on revitalizing the downtown core and our retail area. So again, if we have, if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority, right? So we looked to, for guidance to our strategic plan, and that was one of the items that council had identified. So we wanted to understand how we might go about doing that. So that's what, then one of the main reasons why it was included in there, no questions. Construction industry is a, is a completely different and, you know, different sector, and is the largest employer, for sure, across the area. But I think it's our downtown core and the revitalization of that, I think, was identified as a priority. So that's where our focus went, unless Manager Taylor wanted to add anything to that.
Sure. In addition to Director Halford's comments, it's important to note that the strategy is looking forward. So right now, we are actively doing workforce development initiatives for the trades. So we've put out, our latest video is essentially why you should choose a career in the trades in Muskoka. So that's part of our Venture Muskoka Alliance. And you may have heard, we won an award for some stuff. But not to blow my horn, but Venture Muskoka. So we're actively targeting construction now. Further to Director Halford's comments, we knew that retail was sort of fallen by the wayside because of some of the impacts of COVID, some of the supply and demand, some burnout from retailers. So the reality is, we're actively targeting construction now and continuing to develop that sector. Now we're going to focus on how can we start supporting retail to prop up the goals that are, that have been identified going forward.
Okay, does that answer your question? Great. Counsel, any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you for joining us today. I hope you weren't waiting too, too long, or it was, it's been a long one so far.
We saw a lot. We saw a lot of the mating.
So did we. Yes, but thank you. We appreciate it. We appreciate your time today, and we look forward to implementing some of these suggestions. So thanks again.
Thanks very much.
Okay, take care. Have a good night.
Bye.
Okay, Counsel, as promised, I said that we were going to take a quick... Oh, we have to vote on receiving it, please. Thank you. I'll call the vote. That carries. Thank you. Okay, so as promised, we were going to have a break after the third consultant. I'm going to claw that back to 10-minute break. If you can, if you come back here at exactly 5:57, that'd be great. And then we can get through the next few things.
Okay, so. Next, we have on our agenda our CAO verbal update.
It looks like it's several pages long.
So here we go, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll only be about an hour, so we'll be good. Thank you, thank you for the floor. Just as counsel is aware, I try to do these updates every quarter. Usually I'll sort of skip the summer because we've got our mid-year report that's quite comprehensive as it relates to our budget and our work plans. So this is the first since the summer. So all, this is, of course, a collaboration of input from the senior leadership team, who I'm sure will forgive me if I skip over a couple items for the sake of speed. But as I normally do, I'll share my notes with counsel and staff. And so you'll have that for your back pocket. I will go over a few items in here, though, that I wanted to touch on. The list tends to get a little bit shorter later on in the year as we cover off a lot of the items and initiatives that counsel has directed us to achieve. And at this time of year, that list gets a little bit shorter. But I'll start off with some staff recognition items. We've, since the last time I gave an update, we've had Melissa Halford appointed as a Government and Public Relations Committee member of the Ontario Professional Planners Institute. We had Kayla Tebow obtain her Certified Municipal Officer designation. We had Andrew Stacey elected as Vice President of the Muskoka Association of Road Supervisors. And just recently, as was alluded to a little bit earlier, Amy and her team, as part of her role with Venture Muskoka, won the Marketing Canada Award from the Economic Developers Association of Canada for the impactful job, Muskoka Job Board Digital Marketing Campaign. So. So I'm sure there's others throughout the organization, but those are some of them that come to mind. I usually do a bit of a comprehensive update on our recruitment efforts, but I'll sum that up by saying that there's, we've been quite successful in filling a number of positions across the organization, which I don't chalk up to luck. I chalk that up to a lot of the work. We talked about the strategic plan earlier, which had a heavy emphasis on Gravenhurst becoming an employer of choice. So a lot of work has been done around this council table and internally with administration and in partnership with counsel to inch closer and closer to being just that. So I don't think it's a coincidence that we've been able to successfully fill positions quicker and get a lot more applicants to the positions that we're posting. So kudos around this table and across the organization for doing just that. Sticking on the human resources front, too many educational programs and opportunities to count, but just to touch on a few themes. And we roll out educational opportunities through a number of different avenues, but touched a lot on such topics as respect in the workplace, all kinds of health and safety awareness, training, safe driving for work, a lot of emphasis on mental health and first aid, ergonomics in the organization, a lot of throughout various departments and around this table, actually, a lot of work on sort of the softer skills, the emotional intelligence types of themes. We had a fire drill a few weeks ago or maybe a month ago. Ms. Patterson highlighted rolling out in a lock zone training for staff, and that's occurred throughout the summer months. And more sort of tactical types of training opportunities like managing stress, time management, communication skills, all those sorts of things. So I could go and I know Ms. Harkes Laird could as well go on and on about the opportunities that have been achieved and throughout the year as it relates to our training program here. To more of the program and partnership element, we're in the throes of the Service Delivery Review, which counsel is aware of, and really where Strategy Corps is, who is the consultant doing that work. They've completed their data gathering and engagement with councils and staff and have completed their preliminary findings, really at this point working on recommendations. And I think counsel can expect to see a draft of that, final draft presented to counsel in January. Certainly have our plates full in December with the budget. As it relates to the Muskoka Regional Centre property, status quo really, Infrastructure Ontario continues to work with a proponent, moving that forward. And it's been a little quiet of late, but we understand that work is ongoing there. In the meantime, more effort from a council and staff perspective has been geared towards the Ontario Fire College and advocating for a more community oriented type of disposition process for that property. So ongoing work there. As far as healthcare efforts go, ongoing discussions with the Cottage Country Family Health Team about a potential partnership to see the ultimate build out of the building across the hallway here to expand healthcare services in the community. Still sit on the Health Human Resource Task Force, which this council and this community partially funds to recruit doctors to the area as well. And of course, as counsel is aware, Muskoka-Ligonquin Healthcare has recently submitted their proposal for the hospital, the new hospital model. Couple of other larger ticket items that counsel has dealt with recently. The housing needs assessment, of course, was presented last month that really sort of guides where we're going to go from a housing standpoint. Lots of work on the climate action front, action planning as it relates to our adaptation plan. And I think quite eminently, counsel is going to see the results of an investment in a greenhouse gas emission inventory and climate mitigation plan quite shortly. A couple of other items, the website redesign rolled out this summer. So that, lots of really good feedback from that perspective. We continue to have a heavy emphasis on public engagement, so all kinds of projects that were rolled out over the last several months, including our user fees, our DC bylaw, the 2025 budget, the Ward Boundary Review. Seems like we covered a lot of these things today, actually. So the Housing Needs Study, we, of course, rolled out a bit of a different program. I know Mr. Jennings and rotating departments spent a lot of time at the farmer's market this summer, which we found to be quite successful, and a number of other engagement opportunities. From a short-term rental standpoint, new in 2024 was the acceptance of online payments, which was quite successful. And that program continues to gain traction year over year. With respect to the Opera House, lots of planning with Just for Kicks for a second year to present the Nutcracker, which is underway. An improv program is running for youth with Robin Eclipseham at the Opera House. The Gravenhurst High School held a Spooktacular as an annual tradition. And we're continuing to rebuild, the Opera House is continuing to build and rebuild partnerships with hotels, the steamships, restaurants for ship and show packages. Probably not the one to be the marketing voice for the Opera House, but we'll go, that's what you've got for today. As it relates to the town and the YMCA, the youth space has been really successful. Lots of programming rolling out of that youth space, a great partnership between the town and the YMCA that's been happening there. Similarly, speaking of the high school Spooktacular event, the town and YMCA partnered this Halloween for its own Halloween spook spot for trick-or-treaters on Halloween night. So thank you, Ms. Patterson, for the material on this one. As it relates to recreation programs, the fall programs have been quite successful, just to name a few, mini chefs. There's improv programs, Gym Stars and Fit Kids, Cornhole and a Speed Meat and Mingle event. Lots of work also ongoing with respect to the Winter Carnival. Plans are underway for 2025 and work is ongoing for packaging with hotels and restaurants and such. So lots of folks involved in that. Ward Boundary Review, of course, we just had a good chat over. And with respect to emergency management, in the spring, the Emergency Management Coordination Team organized the annual tabletop training exercise, opting for a mock cyber attack exercise, which is quite topical in the province and probably the world. Since that time, Director Tebow was invited to be a guest speaker, guest speaker for an Ontario-wide municipal records and information management group, really to share the experience and learnings of the exercise from an information technology and risk management lens. Sounds really exciting. And the last thing I'll touch on is just a couple of capital projects. The Oriole Crescent EA and Red Wings Drive EA, council endorsed, of course, a preferred solution for the Oriole Crescent that was received by committee of the whole, and the detailed design is underway. Red Wing Drive Preferred Solution is currently under construction. Of course, the Roads Rehabilitation Strategy, the 2024 program is now substantially complete. And last, but certainly not least, with respect to the Fire and Emergency Services Pumper Three, new type of, new type of pumper ordered for Station Three, really only the second one of its kind in Ontario. So at this point in the year, of course, the cap, I know Mr. Stacey and others across the organization have been checking the boxes of a lot of these projects. So a little bit of a shorter list for you at this point, but certainly not reflective of all the work that's occurred over the past year in terms of rolling out our capital program. So with that, Madam Mayor, that's as quickly as I could possibly go, and I appreciate your time.
No, I think I can speak for all of us. It's really exciting to hear the projects that are unfolding. And also, I mean, for me, it's really great to hear the staff achievements. So thanks for making that a priority in your report. Are there any questions for Mr. Lucas? Okay, I was looking at Counsel Jorgensen, but he's wearing. Okay, so I don't think, I think that was an information item, so we will, am I right, Madam Clerk, there's nothing to receive? And if you do have any questions, once you get the email copied, feel free. We all know that Mr. Lucas's door is always opened for all of us. So, okay. With that, we are moving right along to election sign bylaw, report number LEG 2024-19. Be it resolved that report number LEG 2024-19, RE Election Sign Bylaw be received for information and that the updated election sign bylaw be presented for council's consideration. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, through the mayor to council. I'm sure you're all excited to hear about election. The next election is, of course, two years away, but for the clerk's office, it is always ongoing. So I'm very pleased to present to you the proposed modernized election sign bylaw. And I have a little bit of notes to go through more than I usually would, but I want to start by thanking my counterpart clerks throughout Muskoka. We jointly worked together on various topics and issues and themes in our municipalities as shared resources and support for each other. All election cycles, the clerks across Ontario, and Muskoka is no difference, have had many issues with election signs. And this post the 2022 election and prep for the 2026, a modernized, consistent election sign for all of Muskoka was one of the sort of wish lists. And I'm thankful for my counterparts to helping to put this joint report and joint bylaw in front of council today. So I want to give a little bit of history on how it came to be and how the recommendations are in front of you. So the foundation of this new election sign bylaw is that it's a regulatory tool that speaks about the placement and removal of election signs for municipal, federal, and provincial elections. I will note, previous election sign bylaws for Gravenhurst has only been relevant to election municipals. The new proposed is for all three. And the bylaw identifies permitted sizes, placement, and length of time that can be posted during an active election cycle. I will say, the biggest issue is complaints received during election cycle about the placement of signs. And both the joint report and the cover report speaks about that. But the, so the main recommendation in this bylaw going forward is that election signs are not permitted on municipal public property and stop. So I do want to talk a little bit more about how that recommendation came to be. So as you all will recall during your own election campaigns, election complaints regarding signs are the biggest complaint received in the clerk's office and is then funneled through the bylaw division. And as the race gets closer to Election Day, more and more resources are required to facilitate complaints which need to be diverted to operating the election. Gravenhurst is not alone, this happens across Muskoka in Ontario. So the concerns that we have documented are the environmental impacts, unlawful placement of sign, excessive placement of signs, the labor intensive process to investigate all complaints, which includes receiving a complaint, investigating, following up with the candidate or third-party advertiser. So that's all site visits, documentation, investigation, all of that record-keeping process. So how did we get to an amended bylaw that suggests not on public property? The things we considered were the complaints and resources that I talked about. The impact on the beauty of the landscape of Muskoka. Muskoka is a beautiful place, and the issue with all the election signs detract from the natural beauty. An issue that happens is people come up to the area, especially in the late summer and fall during election period, and they move signs for their pictures and they place them unlawfully, unknowingly, causing complaints and investigation and more resources. A big issue that happens is the placement near residents of people who may or may not support the candidate, but there is that implied support because it's on a road allowance near their home. We have received, I can tell you personally, in Gravenhurst, we received many complaints of this. We also have issues where signs are placed near the residence of staff, which staff are prohibited in a municipal election to participate in an election campaign for a municipal position. It is in our code of conduct, and that risk happens every election cycle. Through the election cycles, the feedback we receive from our voters is they are unaware of the candidate's campaign, and the campaign signs do not provide information on the campaign and information about a candidate. So the signs aren't helpful in providing that information. There is production and waste when there are endless signs. They get blown into ditches and waterways and not picked up, causing pollution issue. We have safety issues when they're put in road allowances too close to the roadway and excessive amount. There's sign-blind, there's sign pollution. Theft and vandalism comes up every time, and that up every time, and that is a matter with the OPP, and unfortunately, municipal staff cannot help with that, and therefore, it's a drain on OPP resources. And finally, voter turnout, there is a lot of extensive research gone into voter turnout and why people vote and why people don't vote, and there is no correlation between the signs being the reason that people participate in an election to vote. The issues, the data suggests that people participate in elections because there is contentious issue, the demographics of the population, the human interest, if there's a high merril race, that includes, increases voter turnout, the same as if there's a lot of acclamations, that will impact your voter turnout, the voter and the voter method itself. But there is no correlation between the amount of signs and the voter turnout. So, the proposed bylaw does not say no signs, it says no signs limited on public property. So, that is your, your road allowances, your parks, your fences on your, on the base, like, you can tell I'm not a sport person, the baseball fields and all those sorts of things. However, signs are permitted on private property, signs are committed, permitted at commercial businesses. So, a resident, you could knock on, a candidate could knock on a door, ask for their support, and a sign could be placed on their property following the size guidelines. That way, a candidate is actively, candidate or someone campaigning for the candidate is actively connecting with a voter and meeting the needs that are, that our constituents are saying they're unaware of. When the sign is placed on someone's property, knowing there's more protection of it from, we're moving it on time and not having it blown away, there's less vandalism when it's not just in a public space where no one's accountable for it. So, there is a lot of reasons that the clerks across Muskoka are recommending this model. There is other modernization words used throughout this joint bylaw, as well as just consistency for all candidates and third-party advertisers who do register in multiple, third-parties will register in multiple areas based on, on the issues and the candidates they're supporting. So, I think I've talked enough. The report is lengthy, and I'm very happy to present this forward for council, representing myself and the rest of the municipalities within Muskoka. I do want to say that this same bylaw was presented to Bracebridge earlier this month, same joint report, same bylaw, other than an AMP's inclusion of ours, and it was adopted by Bracebridge last week. Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna go to, well, council, I mean, open for discussion, Counselor Hunter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I guess my question is, when I look at the report and I see 8.1 and 8.2 is Elections Canada and Elections Ontario, and those would not be included in this, is what I gather. So then, if that is the case, we're strictly doing it for municipal elections, however, when we have an Ontario election or a federal election, those signs will still be everywhere. Is that correct?
No.
So, it says 8.1 Elections Canada states that, and 8.2 is Elections Ontario, so it doesn't, does not address where signs can or cannot be placed. I guess my question is, would this apply to any election?
It applies to, sorry, through the mayor, yes, it applies to all, that's legislation that identifies rules about signs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you know what I'm gonna, I'm going to do, just sort, and I, and I appreciate that that was a question. So, I'm gonna ask, are there questions for the clerk, so we're not dragging her into debate? So, we're gonna go to questions first, and then we can debate the, the approval, okay? So, if it's a question, Counselor Jorgensen.
Yes, this is a question. Thank you, your worship. Given that we are including provincial and federal candidates, was there any outreach to those organizations to get their input and comments?
Sorry, something just popped up on my dial that I've never seen before. Gravenhurst specifically know the other municipalities, their bylaws have always included provincial and federal elections, it's just unique for Gravenhurst to do it. I'm not aware of any specific outreach to the elections offices in those agencies, but those bylaws have, bylaws regulating signs for federal and provincial elections have existed for those offices.
Yeah, it's a question about the bylaw itself, because I see that there's greater than 30 square feet is not permitted, and again, I know that certainly provincial and federal candidates put billboards up on the highway occasionally, so you're saying that they would no longer be able to do that? And again, I was wondering what their comments might be on that.
The idea is, once an election is called in either a federal provincial agencies, the municipal clerks would have a joint letter to all the registered candidates, that these are the rules for election signs within the district of Muskoka or the municipality specifically. So, they would be provided the information and therefore able to enforce, if there's a complaint or we notice a sign illegally, too big, too frequent, on inappropriate locations, would have the ability to send a bylaw officer to investigate and remove, if you will.
Counselor Morphy, you have a question?
Thank you, through you, your worship, to Director Thibault. I go knock on the door, ask for the permission to put my sign on their lawn, and if given, how do I know if they own the road allowance or not? Is there a possible exemption that we need? Or does the sign have to go on the body of their lawn that might be, because most of the rural and cottage areas, they all have, unless they bought their road allowance, which isn't that common. The town owns every boundary road, most of them.
I'm gonna go over to Director Halford for that, it looks like you've got an answer.
Yeah, sure, thank you very much, your worship, to, through you, to the counselor. Generally, like, road allowances are not purchased by property owners, only shore road allowances generally are. Road allowances are owned by the municipality, and there's, so I can appreciate the question, though, the difference between where the 66-foot road allowance starts and where the property owner's property begins, but I think the clerk would likely say that if it's, make sure it's clearly on your property, which is what we tell other people about other in, in the bylaw department, other signs that they choose to put up on their property, we just advise them, make sure it's clearly on your property so that there's no questions.
Okay, pardon me, did you want to?
I can tell you a scenario through the complaint process in the previous election cycles. So, if we received a complaint that it was illegally put somewhere, we, a bylaw would investigate the site, and if it was on a private property, they could simply say to the candidate, it just needs to be moved back, and there's an opportunity for the candidate to move that back, or they could tell the property owner to move that back as well. So, there's often lots of dialogue and education prior to any kind of AMPs or ticket being issued.
Okay, Counselor Strength.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, to Madam Clerk. Outside of Gravenhurst and Bracebridge, have any of the other municipalities amended their sign bylaw or plan on doing that, to your knowledge?
Thank you, through the chair, to Counselor Strength. The intent of all the Muskoka clerks, we agreed to move our, this report and bylaw through the November, December, January schedule, based on when reports would end, and schedules flown, we're all different, we all have different procedural bylaws and different meeting cycles. So, we just happen to be the second in line, but the intent is for this bylaw and report to be presented to all six municipal councils before the end of January, well, before election season officially kicks off.
Counselor Jorgensen, a question?
A question, yes. Again, in the, the bylaw itself, it says election signs shall not be displayed within 50 meters of any other election sign. So, a candidate who goes canvassing in any of our newer subdivisions where the, the lot sizes are 11 meters, why, what's the magic number of 50 meters? Because you may want neighbors who want to support the candidate, and they would not, one of them would not be able to have a sign on their front lawn. What's the, what's the rationale behind that?
Through the chair, to Counselor Jorgensen, the rationale for an oversaturation of the same sign comes to some of those things of the production of waste, the sign-blindness, the sign pollution, just the duplication, and the issues that we see in our landscape when there's the same by, same sign again and again. So, that was the rationale for the sign, the distance.
Does it say same sign? Okay, so the same sign, so, yeah, okay, I, that, I understand that, because when you first asked the question, I thought one neighbor couldn't have Frank's sign, and one neighbor couldn't have Joe's sign, but, no, I get that, yeah, you don't, yeah, I think that's like, go, go ahead.
But what you're suggesting there is that a neighbor who wants to support a candidate with a sign would be unable to do that because there is one next door, and I would think that would infringe on their ability to support a candidate.
Depending how close they live together, and...
There are 11 meters in town.
Well...
11 meters apart.
They're not 11 meters, 66 feet, and...
Are there 11 meters?
If we're here to talk about sign pollution, I don't think any of us would argue that that's too few far between, so, I think you got your answer. Counsel, any other questions? Another question? Yep. Counselor Strength?
Thank you, could I just, through you, Madam Mayor, sorry, can I just get clarification? So, if 460 Philip Street and 480 Philip Street, can, 460 have an election sign and 480 have an election sign? I beg your pardon?
Take your tape measure. Of the same election sign, the same election sign, yeah, so, I mean, again, back to Frank and Joe, you know, I'm using Joe as in Joe O E, I wasn't, when I said it, I wasn't thinking, I was trying not to use a person, but, yeah, I think... Oh, use your mic, please, use your mic, please.
So, Bob and Joe can have a sign on neighboring properties?
If they have this site, this space, spatial distance, they're placed in appropriate places, and there's not that sign-blindness, then it would be in compliance with the bylaw.
Thank you.
It's, I think it's the same, Bob and Bob beside each other can't have the same sign, but Bob and Frank can have a sign, right? If, no, but even if there's not distance, it can't be the same sign. So, Bob can't have a sign next to Frank if they're both Susan's. Anyway, this is getting ugly, so I'm gonna go over to Counselor Cairns.
Thank you, worship, and, I mean, there may be six homes in a row that want to vote for Bob, so you're saying that Bob could only be one, maybe every other house? I think that's not, I don't, I don't agree with that, because there may be, there may be six people, or there may be a whole street that wants to vote for Bob, and so, and show that they're supporting Bob by having a sign, and you can say to that one person, you can't have a sign because you're too close, but you can have a sign, but you still want to vote for him, so can you put that in the middle between the two properties? I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me, if you, if you want to have the same, if you're out canvassing and the counselor wants to ask for, if they, or the, usually, it's the resident says, I would love to have one of your signs in my front yard, but so does the neighbor next door and the neighbor beside that, that means the neighbor has to get to you first, because you can't have one next to the next-door neighbor. That doesn't, that doesn't seem fair.
Okay, so I'm gonna go over to Mr. Lucas, and I think, I think we have to sort of consider this as in, are we making up a problem that, that may or may not happen? Like, we can always amend the bylaw, I think, that would be my thought, like, we, it seems to me, we always go worst-case scenario, like Bob, Susan, Frank all want signs, but they can't have them, I think that that's, I don't think you can govern on speculation, so, but, on that note, Counselor, you're not a counselor, CAO Lucas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really, just from our process standpoint, I know there's lots of thoughts on this clause that have been tossed around the table, and just procedurally, I wanted to jump in and suggest that the bylaw can be amended, so you can, you know, cite your concerns about it, but there's a process to adjust it that's more than reasonable for, and that's through an amendment to the bylaw, so.
Thanks for making so much sense, I appreciate that. So, if you, if you have a big problem with it, take that, take that part of the bylaw out. So, Counselor Johnston?
No, it's red, gotta be red. This is what happens when your, when your mind starts to melt.
Red means go.
Yeah. Seriously, does anybody really think that the number of signs on a, on a, in a, in a neighborhood has any real bearing on an election? You know how many signs I put up during this last election? Six. Six. I mean, if you want to, if you want, I mean, I get the, Counselor Cairns' comment, but if you want to support another candidate and our, and our bylaw prohibits, you know, because of the lot size and so on, there's other ways you can support that candidate, you know, go out and, and knock on doors and distribute pamphlets and so on. Putting up a sign, to me, means nothing. I really, I really do, it means nothing. The number of signs in a, in a neighborhood, so, and as, as CAO Lucas said, if, if it gets to be a problem, we can amend the bylaw, but I just don't, I don't see that it will be. Thank you.
Okay, so, it sounds like we're ready to debate, if there's no more questions for the clerk. Do you have another question? Yeah, that's, no, we're gonna...
You care, the motions?
The, the motion says the updated sign bylaw be presented for council's consideration, so, do we, will you wait for the bylaw stage, Madam Clerk? Or would you like to just pass all of those at council?
Yeah, because we're in committee of the whole, I need direction to bring forward the motion, or the, the bylaw specifically to the council table. So, council can pass this motion now, bring it to the council table, and direct that the bylaw be, let's just hypothetically, approved with section blah, blah, blah removed, and adopt it that way. If you would prefer, you can amend this motion now and say that the bylaw be sent back to staff to amend, blah, 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 and then it would come back at a later date. So, there are options, and if you would like to see lots of changes, I would suggest that that second option is the best, and give more direction on, on bringing back. If it's just the one item that is contentious for council, and it's something that you'd like to proceed with, and just making that one clear thing, you can do that at the bylaw phase. Nonetheless, it is a, it is a bylaw and council's decision, but there are a variety of procedural options to do now or later, depending on what you'd like to do.
Which brings me to, like, let's, if you, if there's something you don't want to see, I guess now is the time we're gonna debate it, so, for debate purposes, are you finished, is council finished asking questions? Okay, so, Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you, worship. As we have chatted, I'm, I'm very much opposed to this, this particular iteration of the bylaw. I think it's important, given... I think it's important, given that we have, as a, I'll speak candidates in general, it's getting more and more difficult to get, get your information out to the voters. I have, for some time myself, I've put my website address on my election signs. And in the rural area, to me, we're talking about proliferation of signs. For example, there's so many cottage roads that I would go down and canvas and putting a sign there would be irrelevant. Nobody's gonna see it. I can, I can, I can get by, by putting up a lot fewer signs to get my website address in front of the voters who have no idea who the candidates are any other way. And I can, I can use fewer signs by putting them strategically on the road allowance and use a lot fewer signs that way. I also think that because we are extending this to provincial and federal elections, that I think we should get input from those organizations. I think signs are an important part of campaigns at those, those levels. And to simply impose something like this without any input from them, I don't think is appropriate. I do, I, I think that that 50 meters between signs, when you have a street that potentially someone's canvassed on, I'm thinking, you know, you go into Pine Ridge and, and a lot of people want to take your sign to show your support. And that's what a sign is doing. It is showing support for a candidate. So they feel that, the homeowner feels that they're, they're supporting a particular candidate and they're doing that through a sign, but i- if, on narrow lots, 50 meters apart is, is completely excessive. And again, the billboard, from a provincial and federal point of view, it's, it's reaching a lot of people. And we're, in effect, outlawing billboards. So I think there's just too many problems from my point of view with this, and I don't support it in the, the form that it's in. So I, I won't support bringing it forward and I'll vote against it if it comes forward. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Counsel, heard some opinions, it's from others. Counselor Morphy?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm kind of finding it a little bit confusing as well. Is it a good time to refer it back to you to take a look at the 50-meter rule and the road allowance rule to see if that's considered, there can be an exemption or municipal property if it's in front of a private, you know, private property owners? I'm not gonna put it up on their porch. So it's, it just, it's, it's complicated. That's what I'm finding. So should we refer it back to you or do you want us to amend it? Or do you want us just to vote one way or another?
It's up to us. I mean, if you, if, you know, I, if you want, if there's one portion of it, I mean, as far as, as far as I'm concerned, it's what do we want our community to look like? And so, you know, if you want to put forward a motion, I don't think we're gonna refer it back. If we're gonna refer it back, we're gonna tell them to refer it back with, with this, this, and this. But if there's no support, if there's no support for those things, that's why we're gonna vote on amendments, right? So if you want to put forward an amendment to take out the 50 feet, which sounds like that's what people want to do, then do that. But I just think that we have to, you know, give direction and the way to do it is to add amendments. Am I wrong? Like, Madam Clerk, like, we can send it back, but what are we sending it back with? I mean, I'm happy with it as it is. So, I mean, I won't vote for, I, I wouldn't vote for it. The question was called as-is. I'm gonna vote for it because I, I agree with all the reasons. Certainly don't want to be the one municipality littered with signs while other five beautiful fall places look beautiful in the fall. So, I've got Counselor Strength next. So if somebody wants to put something forward to take something out of the bylaw, open for that, but I, I want the conversation. I mean, we may figure out, it may shake out that this is gonna pass in the way that it is. So before we send it back, I'd like to sort of get everybody's point of view. Counselor Strength?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I'm, I'm quite happy to support the, the bylaw. I mean, I certainly understand and appreciate it. The 50 meters is excessive to me, so I'd like to see the number changed and I'll put forward a, an amendment. I'm not sure what the number should be. 164 feet? I just, I mean, I can't conceptualize how big that is or isn't. So, do we have to take a recess or something? I mean, I'm not sure what the...
I think you could say, take it down to 25 meters if that's what you felt was appropriate. Do you have a seconder? Is there a seconder for that? Okay, so we have a seconder in, in Counselor Varney?
So that's 80 feet. Sorry.
Okay, Counselor Varney had something?
Thank you, through you. I will be the seconder for Counselor Strength, but I'm also thinking this is freedom of speech in a way. If somebody wants to put a sign on their lawn to support somebody, they shouldn't be told they can't. So I, I agree with what Counselor Strength is asking for. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else want to chime in before we, does anybody else want to chime in before we go back to Counselor Jorgensen? Okay, so, Counselor Jorgensen, is it to the amendment? Okay, so, go ahead.
I think Counsel, Counselor Varney just hit the nail on the head there by saying if someone wants to support a candidate by putting a sign up, they can't. And that's exactly what, even at 25 meters, that's what you're saying. Because they're next door neighbor.
Okay, so do we want to say, just scrap that whole section? Yeah, just scrap that whole section. Okay, is that the, okay, so that's fine. We'll get there. So we have a moving, a mover and a seconder to get rid of that section of the bylaw? Okay. Sure.
Your Worship, if I may.
So we're gonna put that up on the screen. It's moved by Counselor... Oh, so the amendment is, and that the updated election sign bylaw be presented for council's consideration as amended to remove section 3.8.3. Counselor Cairns on the amendment?
No, sorry, it wasn't on the amendment. Something else. I'm good.
Okay, so is it on the amendment?
Yep.
Okay, Counselor Strength?
When we get to a vote, we better try and have a recorded vote again.
Okay, so we are going to vote on the amendment.
Okay, thank you for your patience while I change some settings. So we're gonna do a recorded vote. I've amended your access so that you can speak freely, just press the mic. Please also press your console after you've declared your vote. Gonna start the vote for the amendment now. To remind, the remove, amendment is to update the second line in that motion to, that the updated election sign be presented for council's consideration as amended to remove section 3.8.3. So it's just the amendment motion. I'm just going to go in random order. Counselor Morphy?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Cairns?
Yes.
Counselor Hunter?
Yes.
Counselor Jorgensen? Counselor Varney? Counselor Robinson? Counselor Strength?
Yes.
Mary Lorenz?
Yes.
Sorry, yes. So that carries. And now we can speak to the, speak to the motion. I had Counselor Cairns. Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship, and through you. Number 15 on the report says further introducing a consistent recovery fee of $50 per sign will encourage candidates to ensure the placement and maintenance of the signs on private property. Sometimes, it's not the candidate that moves the signs, it could be the public. And that has happened to me in the past where I have found signs that I did not chart. And, and so, is there a way that, you know, I mean, $50 could be an expensive venue if, if somebody just wants to play a little game, which that happens during election. So I'm just wondering, is there any way that if the counselor should report that their signs have been moved, that $50 fee? Or we, will we be responsible for that $50 fee? Even if we didn't move it? Or put it in the wrong place?
Madam, Madam Clerk?
Absolutely. Through the chair, to Counselor Cairns. The $50 fee has actually always been a Gravenhurst fee. The other municipalities in Muskoka haven't always had that fee, so that will be new for them. The way our process works, though, we receive a complaint, investigate the site, and work with the candidate or third party to ask them to remove it before we get to, to placing an AMP's charge, which this would be, or the $50 fee. It is a last resort if a candidate, third party, is uncooperative. As identified previously, signs placed incorrectly is a common occurrence. And, and that means signs placed incorrectly from people who just move a sign just, just because they don't know, whether people taking those pictures, just moving signs, it happens. We, as, as counts on this table, know when you sign in to become a candidate, you, you get to spend a lot of time sitting in my office reviewing all the rules and procedures for your election and going over the election sign bylaw, proper placements, and that fee. As, and as you all remember, you've signed acknowledgement for it. So you, you as candidates understand where they go. Sometimes those who are campaigning with you or signs move. And we use our, our methods of investigating and working prior to just providing, providing a, a fee. So everything that, that you're asking for, Counselor Cairns, that would absolutely happen first. The, the issue with signs that go missing and get into ditches and, and that happens when there's a whole bunch of signs just displaced. And the idea of having it on private, private property is there's more ownership and acknowledgement that I had a sign here, now it's gone versus blown in the wind and forgotten that it was put out to begin with.
Okay, I think we have, I think we have a long way, that was a long way of saying we're, they're, they're reasonable. The Clerk's Department is reasonable. We're not gonna go out and, before I, I'm gonna ask, does anybody else have anything to say before I circle back around to Ran, Counselor Jorgensen? I think I'm gonna call the question, though. I think you've made it very clear how you stand. I'm not sure that that's the, I'll give you one more chance to persuade others, but I think it's been, you've expressed that you're not gonna, you're not going to vote for it anyway, so I'm not sure if you're gonna... I'll, I'll give you one more chance to speak to it.
Thank you, Worship. I was just curious, though, if you wanted to proceed with more amendments to this on a clause-by-clause basis? I don't feel that that's, I mean, I have issues with a number of the clauses in there.
I'm, I'm not sure that, I'm getting the feeling, and I think it's my, my role to read the room, I'm getting the feeling that most people are comfortable with the bylaw as, as proposed.
Including road allowances in general?
I, I mean, I've heard from two counselors. I mean, if there's an overwhelming support for that, then, you know, speak now or forever, hold your peace. We understand where you're coming from, but I, I'm just getting the general feeling and I think that's part of pushing things along on the agenda is, is deciding whether or not to call the question. And I, I'm going to make that decision.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, I am gonna call the question unless somebody was proposing a, another amendment to the sign bylaw specific? Okay, I'm gonna call the question. Sorry, please vote. I don't think there's any surprises there, but thank you. We, I appreciate your passion, Counselor Jorgensen. Yeah, yeah, we do, we have the bylaw stage. Okay, so, we are moving on to sign law, bylaw exemption, Muskoka Bay Resort. I, I trust we've all read the report. I'm gonna go to Counselor, Director Halford for a very quick, if, or not, I mean, we have the report, so it's up to you.
Thank you very much, Worship. The report is pretty short and sweet and to the point, so if there's any questions, staff are not recommending approval of the exemption to the bylaw for the sign due to the size of it and the, the reasons for which the bylaw was created originally. We don't feel that it, it's in keeping with that, so.
Okay, Counselor Cairns?
Thank you, Worship, and through you. I believe it was really expressed through the business person that did the deputation to us, letting us know that because, you know, the area for the, for where the property is, it needs some kind of identification. I mean, we had the, they had a big trailer there before and, you know, it was seen and people could, would know that, that that's where they're at. And I think, I don't have a problem with it. I think that, you know, we're, we're taking away all these signs. It doesn't look like we're open for business in town. The town looks wonderful right now because we have absolutely gorgeous lights on the poles, if you haven't seen them yet. They're beautiful. The trees are decorated beautiful. But, you know, to say my business is open, I think it's really important that we're allowing, you know, people to have signs, to identify where they are and that they are open for business. So I can't vote in favor of this. I would, I would not, I can't support this.
Okay, counselors? Anybody else have anything? Counselor Strength?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Can you just advise us, Director Halford, what is the maximum size? I didn't do my homework, I apologize, prior to the meeting. Because there are several businesses on the Highway 11 corridor that do have signage that is permitted, to my understanding.
Director?
Yeah, thank you very much, Worship, through you, to the council.
Yeah, thank you very much, your worship, through you, to the counselor. The sign permit application shows two billboard signs about four feet apart, so you can't really see the difference when you're standing back from the road. So a total square footage of 71 square feet, and our bylaw states that you can't have two billboard signs within two kilometers. So it's actually, so what they're proposing is double, effectively double what is permitted. So they were, it would still be allowed to put up one side, one billboard, yes, just not both of them. To, yeah, to be exactly accurate, let me double check, but they've affected, my understanding, I don't have that exact number, but my understanding is that the proposal is for double what is permitted.
Okay, Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you. A question. Director Halford, you said they would be able to put up one billboard, but are we aware, is it in fact not within two kilometers of other billboards? Have we determined that?
Yes, the, what's running afoul of the bylaw is that there are going to be two beside each other, which would not be permitted, but one would be fine because they're two kilometers from any other ones.
Okay, counsel? Any other comments? Okay, well, I'll take my opportunity. Again, you're going to hear this from me a lot, we have the opportunity to shape what our community looks like. Having a massive, double-sized billboard, do you think that there, this is going to be the last one that we hear about? Everybody's going to want a double billboard from here, from Severn Bridge to the, to the cutoff to Bracebridge. So this is an opportunity to shape what our community looks like, in fairness, you know, I appreciate that they want to promote their business. However, I don't think anybody is driving up a highway and deciding that they're going to go and use a business at that moment. I mean, they're already coming here or passing here. That's just not the way people book 18 holes of golf. So I, I'm prepared to support the bylaw and not proceed with the, that the, that the bylaw exemption be denied. So that's just my thoughts. And again, it's because I don't think this will be the first one, if, if we allow this one, and let's face it, we have another situation in town that's getting out of hand as far as we've let one go, and now it's a domino effect. And so I think we, we can look forward to that happening if we permit this, so. My thoughts. So I, with that, because I did give everyone the opportunity to speak before I spoke, I will call the question. Oh, we're going to read it. Be it resolved that report number DV 202496, RE sign bylaw exemption, Muskoka Bay Resort be received for information, and the application be denied. Please vote.
Clerk a question?
Sure.
Just a, a problem I have with these, these motions that are in the negative, that it be denied. So I don't think this will fail, but if it were to fail, that does not mean it's been approved. So would we have to bring forward another motion then to approve it? Or are you considering the same matter twice?
No, because it won't be brought, it won't, the bylaw exemption won't be brought to...
I'm just saying, I'm just saying the motion, like, I'm, I, I feel the motion should be in the affirmative to approve it, and then if you want to vote against that.
You say no.
Otherwise, otherwise, we haven't really dealt with it if the, if the motion were to fail.
But I think the recommendation is denied.
I understand that, I'm just. Yeah.
Oh, hold on. Okay, go ahead.
So Counselor Jorgensen is suggesting that if we vote yes, we're approving the denial?
Approving the denial.
Okay. That you agree to be denied? Thank you.
So, does everybody understand how you're going to vote if? Everybody gets it? Okay? The voting is open. Is it the two that are gone?
Oh, of course, yes. Yes, please, thank you, sorry.
Okay, so that is carried, and let's keep on moving here. Sign bylaw procedural updates, report number DV 202497. It is moved by. Counselor Strength, second by Counselor Varney. Be resolved that report number DV 202497, sign bylaw procedural updates be received for information, and that council approve the amendment to Schedule I of the bylaw 202488, user fees and service charges bylaw. So, Director Halford?
Thank you very much, your worship. So to summarize the report, based on the number, tonight is a good example, the number of sign exemptions that have been coming forward as of late, it's identified some streamlining that is necessary in the wording of the sign bylaw and how the process for exemptions works. We've, we've updated our procedures internally, but what is before you this evening is the approval of a nominal fee for if applicant has not been able to successfully amend their application to a point where staff are able to recommend a staff-level exemption, then they would, then staff would go ahead and prepare a report and bring it to council. So it would remove the requirement for this seemingly out-of-nowhere presentation from an applicant with nothing before council to make a decision upon. So it will be always, it will be accompanied with a staff report. So let's say a property or business X wants to put up a sign, we tell them we're not, it doesn't meet the intent of the bylaw at a staff level, you're welcome to go to council, would you like to do that? Yes. Then they pay the $200 report fee, the processing fee. We would prepare a report, and then if they would like to speak to you directly to plead, to, you know, make their case known, they would ask to be a delegation. So it's a, the amendment is to the fees bylaw to add in this step to the process. It was not necessary before because we didn't have this many applications, but now we do. So here we are. That is all.
So similar, just so I understand, before I put it out for questions, so similar to any application that requires staff time?
Right.
That, because they want an exemption, that, that's not on the backs of the rest of the town?
Correct, yes.
Taxpayers?
There's an additional level of a staff report needing to be prepared and that.
Okay.
So a nominal fee to, to, to get that on the docket.
But they all also have the, you know, the option to just stick with, yeah, and you'll tell them that upfront, that you're not going to support their.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you, your worship. Well, I'll take off my contrarian hat tonight, I have a hat on, because I think this is a long time coming, it's great. And I think we need to make sure that our other bylaws, where we have written in, you can come to council for an exemption, that we make sure there's a process for any, any such bylaw. So I'm, I'm glad to see this, thank you.
Oh, good, I'm glad you're glad. Okay, counsel, are there any questions? Okay, I will call the question. All in favor, please vote. And that carries, thank you very much. Okay, so we are going straight into updates from counsel, and I know I've got, I've got Counselor Johnston down for one, for Muskoka Watershed Council update. So I'll pass it over to him.
Your worship, that's a. I'll, I'll be, I'll be very, very quick. I'm going to take two minutes or less. So my update is this, on Thursday, on the 28th of this month, there's going to be a meeting in Huntsville. Mayor Lorenz and I, Counselor Cairns and Varney will be attending, along with C.A. Lucas, and it's, it's the IWM workshop, workshop agenda. And I'll just give you three highlights, the, we're going to have a very interesting presentation by the Indigenous Perspective on Watershed, the Role of Indigenous People in Watershed Stewardship. That will be number one. We're going to talk about the, what rolled out from the February conference, and what, where do we, where do we go from here? We're going to hear from the District of Muskoka about the watershed programs that they are involved in right now. And then the last point I want to make, and just to, just to clarify for counsel, is that there will be no passage of any policies or any agreement on anything at the meeting. What we're going to do is, is make suggestions, what the group is going to do, make suggestions as to where we go forward here, we'll bring that back to council for their review. That's my report, your worship. Thank you.
Very succinct, thank you. I'm going to be very, very brief, I'm going to be briefer than you, not take full advantage of my update. I just want to remind everyone that Saturday is the Santa Claus parade, so hopefully we'll get a bit of snow and get out and support the, yeah, we want snow for the Santa Claus parade. Anyway, great to see everybody out there, and I want to thank staff for sticking it out today, it's been a long meeting, but, you know, see, see you out, out and about on Saturday, there's usually a lot of. Oh, and fro, and light up the wharf, oh gosh, it's a busy week, I apologize. And light up the wharf down at, down at the wharf, that's where it's going to be. So kick off to the holiday season, you know, look forward to seeing you all out there and, you know, hit a church sale, do all the fun Christmas stuff, so. With that, I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn, Counselor Cairns and Counselor Johnston, and please vote on that. And we're rolling right through it. We already received the, oh, that carries. So we already have opened up the meeting from earlier. Okay, so we, is there any disclosures of community interest on the council agenda? I don't see any, okay, so. It is moved by Counselor Morphy, second by Counselor Robinson. Be it resolved that the council minutes from October 15, 2024 be adopted as circulated? All in favor? Please vote. Okay, well. Okay, no, thank you. That carries, thank you. Moved by Counselor Strength, second by Counselor Varney. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole minutes from October 15, 2024 be adopted as circulated? And please vote. And that carries, thank you. Moved by Counselor Cairns, second by Counselor Hunter. Be it resolved that the following bylaws be read, passed, and grossed into the bylaw book, bylaw number 2024108, amend Doc. bylaw number 202490, bylaw number 20... Pardon? Execute, yeah, execute lease agreement. Bylaw number 2024109, amend 2025 user fees and charges. Bylaw number 2024110, development charges. Bylaw number 2024111, election signs. Bylaw number 2024112, execute lease agreement, Muskoka mind and body. And for those who were tuning in seven hours ago, that's what, closed session. Counselor, Counselor Jorgensen?
Yes, I'd like to vote separately on.
The election sign?
Oh, and development charges.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll vote on development charges first? Okay, please vote. All right, thank you, and then we'll vote on the election signs. And please vote. Okay, that carries, thank you, and then on the other three. Oh, I got a vote. Okay, and that carries, thank you. All righty, so be resolved that bylaw number 2024113 to confirm the council meeting held on November 19, 2024 be passed, it was moved by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Jorgensen. All in favor? Please vote, thank you. And that carries, thank you, a motion to adjourn, Counselor Jorgensen and Counselor Hunter. Thank you, and vote on adjournment. All right, thanks again to staff for.